Good evening and welcome to the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees meeting for January 19th, 2023. I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask that everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome, everyone, old and new who's here. I want to specifically congratulate Kansas State on beating KU. You can't have a rivalry if the other team doesn't win sometime, so that's good. Our next item on our agenda is the swearing in of trustee Melody Rail. We are going to swear in our new trustee. We'd never done this, and actually trustee Ingram or I argued with Andy about our custom or like thereof, and he said, "In my experience, we always administer an oath of office." And I said, "Well, that's good. It's your college to execute, so we'll do that." So if you would, however you want to do it, Mr. Vice President, should we have her in front? We all had to go in front.
Yeah.
Do you believe so?
Ms. Rail.
I had to get up and walk.
Would you please come forward? And you can either, I think being at the podium is fine.
Yes.
I'm not trying to embarrass you, Melody.
So that she can be heard.
I'm not working to embarrass you. I'm just trying to do it properly.
Sure you are.
I voted for you. All right. If you please raise your right hand and state your name. I-
I, Melody Rail.
-do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas-
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas-
And to faithfully discharge-
And to faithfully discharge-
My duties as Johnson County Community College trustee.
My duties as Johnson County Community College trustee.
Madam trustee, welcome back to the board. It's great to have you. Congratulations. I will move on to the roll call of trustees. Having spoken to everyone when I was late, the picture, I believe that we're all present. So seven trustees again are on the dais. The next item on our agenda is the awards and recognition section, and I'm going to turn it over here to Vice President Mickey McCloy.
Well, tonight we have a bit of a surprise, something that was added to our agenda, and so I will call soccer coach Jeff Cole up to the podium for a presentation.
Well, thank you for having us. Dr. Bound asked me to come and talk about our program and some of the accomplishments we've had this past year. This is Alan Lopez. He's a sophomore forward from Dodge City, Kansas. He was the Gatorade Player of the Year back in 2020, and his freshman year, he had 10 goals and 10 assists, was first-team All-Conference, first-team All-Region, and then this past year really had a breakout season. We had 13 goals, seven assists, and then just first-team All-Conference, first-team All-Region, first-team All-American through the NJCAA, and then with United Soccer Coaches, he was first-team All-American with them, but more importantly, he was scholastic first-team All-American. But then the icing on the cake was he was just named National Scholar Player of the Year, and it's the first time-
Woo!
We've taken a lot of steps since I took over this program back in 2020. We've had the highest GPA this past fall semester during our competition season, 3.14 with 29 student athletes. So Alan was a 4.0 student. He's still kind of salty because he's got a 3.93 GPA because he has a 1B in one of his classes so far in his collegiate career. But I'm extremely happy for Alan and for the rest of my student athletes of how far we've come. The program is, you know, what we call officially mine because now the players now are, you know, all the freshmen offer all the kids that I've recruited, and so we can see how the program is going on an upward trajectory and everything. And so this past year, we won the league, unfortunately lost in the tournament championship game in overtime to Cali County.
Wow.
But, you know, more importantly, we were ranked as high as 11th in the nation. So, you know, I'm super excited for this spring, really excited for next fall, but Alan has been just a fantastic ambassador for our program. He was our captain this past fall, but all the recognition should go to Alan right now. And I mean, the award that he had is the first in program history, and it's just a fantastic award for our program and for our institution. So, congrats, Alan.
If we can, Coach, could we have Alan stand for questions?
Yeah. He'd love it.
If Alan wants to. Any questions for Alan here? Trustee Ratain.
How old were you when you first started playing soccer?
I was around five and six years old. It's just always been in my life because my older brothers, they started since they were young as well. And we're like, I don't know how they started playing soccer because my dad was more of a baseball guy, but yeah, I'm glad they started playing soccer. I love it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Musel.
Alan, thank you for coming and congratulations. Why Johnson County Community College from Dodge City? How many programs are there between Dodge City and Overland Park? And I know that trustee Smith Everett will ask you the same question.
Because we're the best.
I just, I loved the campus when I came to visit, and I also liked the idea of the culture that Coach Cole was building, and I knew that I saw like the upcoming of this program, and I just thought the campus was really good, and I came here just because like location is also better than Dodge City. So yeah, that's the main part.
And where do you want to continue your soccer career?
I'm still looking for a place to continue my career in academics.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trustee Smith Everett.
Now I'm down to congratulations. I'm a soccer mom with a burgeoning 10-year-old who would like to be a forward, and I'm learning the game, so I can't say I understand all of it except for that there's two nets on the opposite sides and you should move the ball into the net depending on your team. But I would love to know what your career projections are, what you'd like to do once you're done with soccer, or is soccer your career choice?
Hopefully after here, I want to go play Division One soccer, and I hopefully after that, possibly I can make it into the draft-
Go pro.
Into the MLS, but if not, I want to continue my career like to become an accountant or something along with in business. And yeah, that's like my main goals.
So my last question is Messi or the other guy? Which one is the best soccer player of all time?
Messi.
Thank you. Good answer. Thank you so much.
If I may, if I may, do you have any questions?
No.
What are you studying?
I'm studying business right now.
Right. And then how do you maintain your commitment to academics?
I just, you know, after soccer practice and like weights and all that, I just find time after that, like during the evening, just to do all my homework. And we also have study hall throughout during the day, so I mean, I get a lot of my work done there as well.
One thing that I implemented when I took over the program in 2020 is we have mandatory study hall every single day from 12:30 to 2:00, and great checks every Friday. So it's impossible for you to not do well with all the academic resources we have here, the Academic Resource Center and all the tutoring that's available. So, you know, I make sure that there's life after soccer because I don't want Alan to go back home to Dodge City and live in his basement playing FIFA because I don't think his parents would want him doing that as well. So, you know, like I said, there's life after soccer, and I'm trying to prepare these student athletes for that. But we take academics very serious here, and I'm trying to move my players on to the next institution after this.
Alan, if I may say, I own a small business, and three or four of my business heroes are Warren Buffett, Benjamin Graham, Gene Cross, my grandfather that ran a bricklaying company, and then Billy Bean. Billy Bean was a general manager, vice president of baseball operations for the A's, and he stepped down with a succession plan in place this past fall, and in part, he has ownership commitments in European soccer teams. So apart, his business model that he ran in Oakland is being implemented in Europe, and I would encourage you to check him out because he's an outside-the-box thinker and had consistently found strategies to play at a major league level without a lot of money. So I commend you. We thank you for representing us so well, and if we could have one more hand for Alan, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great job. Mr. Vice President.
All right. And to continue on with our awards and recognition, tonight's student spotlight will be Joel Huayabon.
So I'm understanding that I'm just here to talk a little bit by myself.
Yes, sir. Share your story.
Well, first and foremost, I'm a believer in Jesus Christ. I believe in that he died on the cross for my sins, and he's my savior. I attend City Center Church, and I've been going there all my life. I'm only 18, I mean, but that's where I'm going primarily. I'm majoring in fine arts here at Juco, and I plan on studying jazz studies as my master's degree. I plan on going to KU probably is where I want to go. And I guess I also like to play soccer, but I don't think it was in my career. Now I just spend most of my time in the gym instead, so I do that. And I do a lot of music. I'm involved in the music at my church, and I'm giving lessons to a bunch of students that are middle schoolers who are also, I want to pass on knowledge also. I'm also a student leader at my church also, and that's just, oh, I also want to join the military eventually to just offer service to the country.
Thank you very much, Joel. Any questions here for Joel?
Go for it.
I'm waiting.
I had one, now I just lost it because I was worried, Mr. Musel.
Well, what is your program and where did you grow up? How did you come to Johnson County Community College?
I grew up in Aletha, and I attended Aletha Northwest and graduated from Marinatha Christian Academy my senior year. I just came to JCCC because it was cheap and affordable, and I was offered a scholarship to go here by Dr. Heinlein for the music education, and it's just close to home, just 10 minutes away, so.
Great. Thank you. Madam trustee.
I thought of it. Two questions. What do you play and why JCCC over other options around here?
I play the clarinet and saxophone primarily. I chose JCCC because, again, it was cheap and affordable, and I wasn't planning on attending college this semester. I was actually in the delayed entry program for the Marine Corps, and I backed out of it this summer or past summer because a lot of people were telling me to get my education first because the Marine Corps will always be around, and I can go in an officer level, get an officer job, and set myself up in the Marines way easier with the college education. And again, JCCC was like, it was like last minute, so I came here and I got the scholarship pretty easy. So, yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions unless someone else does.
She asked it. The instruments.
My daughter plays the clarinet, and that's awesome. Dr. Bound can't be here tonight. He's had a prior commitment. We needed him at, but I referenced him today. He shared with us that presidents don't like to be absent from a board meeting, and trustee Ingram and I both suggested he go. And today, we talked briefly, and I said, "You know, even Jesus got betrayed by people underneath him, so you're just going to have to trust us." I knew an atheist lawyer from North Dakota, of all places, who went to Notre Dame, and he shared with me that he was an atheist. And I'm like, "Oh, that's great." It was a longer conversation, but I'll boil it down to this for you. He goes, "But I love Jesus." I said, "What?" And he goes, "Yeah, Jesus revolutionized human philosophy." And I said, "How?" And he said, "His concept of that the meek shall inherit the earth" really did revolutionize human philosophy and academic study for the centuries and millennia that have followed. So I'm a devout Christian, and I appreciate your faith. With respect to, oh, the military, I have two brothers who are Marines, an uncle, at least one other cousin that was a Marine, and my brother who's a Marine is now in the Navy. He's an officer in the Navy. So I'd highly recommend you be an officer, if I may say so. And then, you know, thank you for being here. Thank you for representing us so well.
Of course.
Thank you. Any other questions for Alan?
Joel.
For all keep talking. Joel.
Chair Cross.
Trustee Rail.
So I just want to applaud you for your commitment to the military. I'm a veteran, and I hope you follow through on that. I was enlisted, which I found to be very rewarding as well, but I just wanted to kind of express my thanks that you're considering doing that, and I hope you follow through with it.
Yeah.
It's a very rewarding way to go.
And Joel, let me apologize to you again, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, Melody. Sorry.
Oh, no, I'm fine.
Okay. If we could have another hand for Joel, that'd be great. Thank you.
You want to make sure Alan and the soccer coach know they can leave?
Yes.
They're being very polite.
You're good.
You sure help us on our attendance.
Try to get a study hall or-
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the open forum section. I usually read this thing. I have an abundance of caution. The open forum section is an item we have each at each meeting. I will say that registrants need to apply every day, each month, the day before for Zoom. Is that correct? By 5:00 PM?
Just speak on Zoom.
Just appear on Zoom, or they need to apply 15 minutes prior to this meeting, and I have lost that script. So with the many times I've read it, I will say that the chair has the discretion to provide five minutes to each speaker, and at the discretion of the chair to, subject to the number of speakers we have, to reduce it accordingly, we ask that everyone be civil, polite, and refer any specific comments to the appropriate department. And for instance, like we want to address personnel matters, right? Are we supposed to address personnel matters? No. Kelsey Nazar says no. It's a hard pass. So at any rate, you need to register the day before to appear by Zoom or 15 minutes prior, sign up 15 minutes prior to this meeting outside this door to have the open forum session. I think that's important. We had a few incidents over the years. I'm not sure trustee Rail enjoyed those, but we did. And so it's just important that people know that there's a policy and procedure in place in an institution of this size to handle that issue. The next item on our agenda is the board report, portion of our meeting, and we'll start with the Student Senate and the presentation by Mr. Daniel Gonzalez.
Hello and good evening.
Good evening.
So first on my report, I would just like to say again, we have our new secretary, our executive board member, Kinley Chapel, who is our new secretary at JCCC. Student Senate has not had their first meeting yet this semester. However, we have had our first Student Senate retreat, which was on January 9th. We have 15 senators show up, and it lasted for two hours. We went over Roberts rules and just some other general Student Senate etiquette. Additionally, Student Senate has had two funding requests this semester, and Student Senate is coming into this new semester with a dedicated group of student senators that are looking forward to making some great changes here on campus and continue the traditions that we already have. So that's all I have for you guys.
Any questions for Daniel? Madam trustee, Smith Everett.
Daniel, thank you for being our third student to speak tonight. I just have to say, I think it's fantastic to start with three students. Can you give us a preview of one exciting change that you're hearing about or people or clubs are working on?
So-
Making changes.
I'll kind of highlight one of my other organizations that I'm part of. Actually, two other ones. For the JCCC Cybersecurity Gov. and JCCC Math Engineering, they're having a STEM networking fair that's going to be happening on March 1st. We're going to try to get out a lot of industry to come, like Panasonic, I know, is working closely with JCCC right now, so we might try to get them out there. To just highlight what JCCC is doing with their STEM career fields, and we will be requesting Student Senate funding for that event.
Thank you.
It's very exciting. Any other questions for Daniel? Daniel, as always, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with all that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. The next presenter we have is a presentation from our college lobbyist, Mr. Dick Carter, who I believe appears by Zoom.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for allowing me to join this way. I know this whole series of technology evolved out of the pandemic, but it's extremely helpful for days like today where I have hearings that go clear up to the time that our meeting starts in Overland Park. We're now partially through the second week of the 2023 legislative session, and things are beginning to ratchet up. The budget committee discussions, at least in the House, have produced some heated moments as committee members have challenged administrative folks on expenditures made during the interim process through the Spark and some of the ARPA funds that have been made available. We're curious to see if that's a salvo or a warning as to what the future budget development will look like as the legislature puts together the version of its budget compared to the governor's budget recommendations, which just came out last week. We definitely have some work to do with regard to the governor's budget recommendations. We had a banner here last year, and so we don't want to be seen as complaining about the budget recommendations, but there were some items that were funded last year that have not carried forward that make it a little bit difficult to maintain our level footing. The two-year sector received a budget recommendation of about $6.5 million out of the $107 million in new money suggested by the administration. We'll need to work to replace dollars that were not budgeted in the current cycle for part of the recentering process. The problem is, is that the exact number is not yet known, and that's actually been a topic in a couple of the presentations, not only at the appropriations committee on the House side, but in a couple of the education committees thus far this year, even though we're only less than two weeks in. Those are just a couple of the findings so far. We know that the full budgeting process has not started yet, but it's definitely going to be a busy one for the two-year sectors as we work to recover some of the money that we did not get from last year. The affiliation bill that we talked about earlier in November and December did not make its way to the process. However, there is going to be a bill to a specific affiliation, and that's kind of the direction that we were hoping things would go. Just as legislators were getting ready to come to Topeka, we learned of an institutional affiliation between, proposal that is, between Fort Hays State University and two technical colleges. That would be Northwest and North Central Technical Colleges. Northwest is in Goodland, and North Central is in Beloit. And the initial draft was approved by the Board of Regents at its meeting just yesterday. So it will be introduced in the near future. I've not seen the specifics that are contained in the bill, but we know from just what we're hearing about the draft that there'll be a few things to watch. Issues related to service territories. When State University absorbs institutions that have different service territories that could cross over into community college territories, there's always a concern. Maintaining the integrity of the tiered and non-tiered funding streams throughout this transfer. Student counts are measured differently. And so again, that's a lot of what some of these affiliations are about, is boosting enrollment numbers, student numbers, and what those base dollars that flow on to the merged entities look like. So we'll be watching that very closely. Again, it's just getting started. When this happened the last time between Wichita State University and Wichita Area Technical College, that particular affiliation took a two-year legislative cycle. We may be looking at something similar to that with regard to this particular affiliation as well. There is a bill that was prefiled before the legislature ever even got to Topeka by Representative Fairchild. That bill is House Bill 2002, and it's a bill that would definitely have a positive impact on any local governing body with taxing authority, and it pertains to the revenue-neutral rate legislation that was contained in last year's Senate Bill 13 legislation, or I guess that would have been in 2021. This bill would expand in perpetuity the state funding to pay for the printing and mailing of the revenue-neutral statements that are generated by the county clerks and mailed out. Currently, the legislation provided for two years of reimbursement to the county for such costs. At the time that it would expire, which would be this budget cycle or this year, those costs would be proportionally passed on to the various entities in a county for which the county clerk is putting together the revenue-neutral rate budget sheet to send out. So that is something that we'll definitely want to be supportive of as it moves its way through the process. Another bill that was brought to my attention last, late last week, and it just got introduced early this week, is a bill that would provide grant funding to institutions and industry professionals in the film profession, and that includes a handful of higher education institutions such as us that offer some sort of program degree certification. It's not for new, it's not for new programs. It's seeking to build on what exists in consort with the film industry. Those grants will be awarded and monitored by the Kansas Department of Commerce through the Creative Arts Industries arm that is part of the, that is part of the agency. So we're looking forward to that. We think there will be hearings in February on those particular, on that particular issue as well. So that, those are kind of some items that were already in the report. In the past 24 to 36 hours, there's quite a bit of activity that has unfolded. A residency bill has been introduced that would treat technical colleges and community college residency issues in the same manner. And so essentially, that would be a six-month period for non-residents to become state residents, and it would also impact, again, I think at the technical college level, those particular students are treated as in-state residents regardless of where their, where their home base is for the purposes of school. So this will, this will treat those institutions the same. That will once again be helpful for things like voluntary affiliations. There will be a bill that was introduced, actually, it was introduced this morning in House Appropriations. The Promise Act will have a few amendments, and those amendments would add elementary and secondary education tracks to the list of approved courses that could be part of the Kansas Promise Act, as well as the word, as the word transportation, that is, to the distribution and logistics track. That will help us out certainly as we seek to expand the CDL program at JCCC. The proposal doesn't really speak to the non-resident border areas of the state, but we anticipate an amendment will probably be coming during the bill hearing that will address that issue. And that's something that we've talked about over the past year. There's a number of community colleges that are along the state's border around the entire rectangle of Kansas, and I think that will be helpful as folks continue to try to recruit that workforce through training programs that we're able to offer at the community college and technical college level. The Technical Education Authority will have some amendments introduced via a bill. They were introduced earlier this week, and that measure would allow direct appointments from the technical and community college sectors and would also clarify the roles of ex officio members on the authority. There's not been a hearing date established yet for that particular bill. Again, things are just sort of making their way into what we call the bill hopper as they're, as they're introduced and printed by the, by the reviser's office and the state printer. And then finally, a bill was introduced just this week that would address malicious and untruthful election mailers. And the word on the street is that that comes out of a result of a community college race in the state of Kansas. So again, one of the things that we don't talk about very often is you're an elected Board of Trustees, and there are frequently bills that are introduced that impact that process, and so we'll be following that one as well. I think, Mr. Chair, that probably captures kind of the whirlwind of activity up to, up to this point, and I would pause there to see if I'm able to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carter, and you're welcome for the accommodation. We're certainly glad to have you in any capacity. Any questions for Dick?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Musel.
Dick, is there a fiscal note, an amount that the bill to reimburse counties for mailing out revenue-neutral rate hearing notices? Is there a number associated with that?
That's a really good question, and I don't, I don't have the answer to that. And the bill, I don't think the bill, I would have to look-
I'd like to know that at some point if that gets-
Yeah.
-estimated, simply because I think it's, it's an amount of money imposed on counties and in this case paid for by the state that had less of a substantive impact than a symbolic impact. And when we don't have money to spend, I don't think it's good expenditure, but I'd like to know that number.
Yeah. Once, once that number becomes available, and it's going to be different for different counties- different for different counties across the state, and obviously, we live in a high-population county in Johnson County. So once those numbers become available, I'll make sure that you have those at your disposal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Smith Ever.
Thank you. Mr. Carter, I wondered if you had gotten your eyes on HB 2049. I received correspondence about it today, and I believe it has to do with the lowering of the requirements for CNA. Just got kind of concerned questions, and I didn't, I wasn't able to look it up. The site had crashed at the time or wasn't available.
Yep. No, that, that was one of the bills that was just in today's packet, and we haven't even had a chance to download and absorb that bill. I do know that the bill would lower the training hours from 90 to 75. That's, those are the the primary points of particular House bill. And I was, I was communicating with Heather Morgan about that at about 3:30 this afternoon as, as we figured out that that bill was was introduced. And we'll be, we'll be reviewing that so that we know how we're going to respond.
Do you know who brought it forward?
On that one, I don't know. I do know that as we were preparing for the session, a lot of those conversations were being discussed between the State Chamber, the Hospital Association. I don't think that that the Nurses Association will necessarily be in favor of that. But again, the bill, I was going to look it up real quick to see if it, if it was a committee bill or if there was anybody's name on it, but I don't think that, I don't think that it, a lot of the bills that we see are come out as committee bills. Yeah, it was introduced and referred to the Committee on Health and Human Services. And there's no, there's no group or name attached to the bill. So it's a, it's considered a committee bill, Trustee Everett.
If I may, Mr. Carter, last month at the legislative luncheon, I believe you were there in attendance with with me and Dr. Bound, and I know Trustee Ingram was there. I think Senator Baumgartner had said that the Central Kansas, South Central Kansas delegation had been proposing and pushing that issue. That's my memory.
So they have, they have a different issue. That, that is one of the things that that they're talking about. It's also one of the things being discussed in Topeka. One of the the concerns I think that we were hearing out of, out of South Central area was specifically related to training at a hospital and a, and a hospital system or network that has its own training system, if you will. And they would be hiring CNAs and sending them through their onsite program as well as apprenticeship-type applications.
It's my.
We've not seen any development of that.
Yes, sir. It's my understanding there's a need for this perhaps because of the lack of medical professionals and care in rural Kansas, is that right? That's part of the impetus.
Well, it's all over, and this issue is primarily related to the CNA training. And, and so nursing home, long-term care facilities that would utilize that level of healthcare providing, that is the the targeted group. But it's, it is in rural, but it's also, it's also in the larger areas as well. It's not just limited to rural Kansas.
Thank you for that.
So, Dick, is there any indication that there's a portion of that bill that might address? Because it seems that that bill would be attempting to address that shortage, but part of the issue is the required certification for CNA trainers. Part of the issue across the state is that to train CNAs requires 2,500 hours plus of work in a long-term care facility, which by its design pushes registered nurses and LPNs who work in hospitals out of the CNA education business and therefore makes it more difficult for us to employ enough instructors to build more student hours.
Yeah, I, I know that following this meeting this evening, that Heather Morgan and I plan to have a conversation on the, over the phone to talk about just exactly what the bill does, because neither of us have had the opportunity to delve into it to see just exactly how far the bill goes, what regulations may be reduced or or enhanced depending on on where they're at in the process. And just a casual, quick glance at the, at the bill, I really would rather not offer any comment without having, having had the opportunity to look at the language in the bill.
It, it's a good question. I had it too, and I thank Dr. McLeod for asking, and we've caught you somewhat flat-footed here, so I didn't mean to catch you unprepared.
Not at all.
For addressing the issues.
It's just a matter of timing and when the bill comes out and when we're reporting.
Any other questions for Mr. Carter? Dick, I guess I just want to ask you about the the financing for higher education. You have a note in your report that says last year the Regents got some 20 million in aid for cybersecurity. Is that right?
That would be the state universities, yes.
And, and did the community college movement, what did we get there?
They, they didn't receive any, and during the discussion over the course of the interim, I believe it was recommended that each institution get approximately $500,000 to address cybersecurity issues. That was not funded.
Right, and I guess as an elected official, I have the purview to perhaps share my opinion that, I know from one source in the State House that it was stated that higher education has enough money or that the community colleges have enough money. Do you suppose the governor and the legislature are aware of how high mill levies are for community colleges throughout the state?
I'm not, I'm not sure I can answer that question.
I'm asking you difficult rhetorical questions that you should not answer, but I'm told I should ask questions. So unless there's any other questions for Dick, I won't take any more time. Mr. Carter, thank you, as always.
Yes, thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda here is from the Faculty Association, and Ms. Andrew, Professor Andrea View is giving the report tonight.
I'm Andrea View. I teach political science here, and I'm the Vice President of the Faculty Association. Brett is a little bit under the weather, so he asked me to fill in this evening. First, I kind of wanted to start off saying thank you to Dr. Joy Coeston for her service to this board. We really appreciate her service to the board, college, and community. She was a valued member for, of the board who had a solid understanding of and consideration for the work of faculty here at the college, and so she will be missed, but we do wish her well. Next, we also want to welcome our new trustee, Melody Rail, and we have not met before, so I look forward to meeting you as well. But I know that you have served on this board before and in prior years and have a direct knowledge of this college's operations and can pretty easily like kind of step in smoothly and have a nice transition here to to start this term. So we are very appreciative of that. We, the JCC Faculty Association, do look forward to working with you to bolster student success and support the amazing work of our employees, whether they're faculty or staff, part, full-time or part-time. One of the greatest assets of this college is that we are all here and passionate about the students and their success, and so we look forward to continuing that work. So thank you and welcome. Speaking of student success, this is Welcome Week, so, which is also known as the first week of the semester. So Welcome Week actually started as a bottom-up effort set up by JCC employees to welcome students to the campus, and they, they ask supervisors to encourage their employees, including employees that wouldn't typically engage with students on a regular basis, to volunteer one hour of time to support Welcome Week initiatives and activities. So scores of JCC employees signed up to assist in our Welcome Week events, kind of welcoming students to campus, helping them print out their schedules and find in their classes, directing them to buildings, centers, or wherever they needed to be, and just in general making them feel welcome here and included on our campus. So I do want to say thanks to everybody, you know, all of the the employees that volunteered their time this week to ensure our students start off, kind of start the semester on a path to success. It was really kind of a pleasure to participate in, and I look forward to doing it in future semesters. One thing that I do want to kind of point out, last December, it kind of missed the board packet last December, but it was announced that eight faculty members received the Distinguished Service Awards. Distinguished Service Awards recognize excellence in job performance for all bargaining unit members who have completed five years of full-time, full-time work at JCCC. So applicants are judged by an external judge who looks at extraordinary effort in four different categories, basically job, basic job responsibilities, divisional and institutional responsibilities, community engagement, and professional development. So this year, the eight people that were awarded that, that honor were Jay Antle, Professor of History, Maureen Fitzpatrick, Professor of English, Don Gale, Professor of Philosophy, Amanda Glass, Associate Professor of Chemistry, Melanie Harvey, Professor of Chemistry, Allison Smith, Professor of Art History, Andrea View, Professor of Political Science, and Gwen Wright, Associate Professor of Human Science. My little fingers, there we go. One of the other things I kind of wanted to inform you about, the Master Teacher Workshop is back after its hiatus during the pandemic, and that was last week. Generally, it will, and it has been in the past and will continue to be the January of PLD week. So basically, this workshop is planned and led by full-time faculty. This year's workshop was held off-campus at Heartland in Parkville, and new faculty fellows from the Center for Teaching and Learning gave presentations to the participants, and then participants also do a short teaching demonstration about their area. So it kind of builds collaboration across different academic areas and helps faculty kind of think about how to share their discipline and foster cross-disciplinary initiatives. And then finally, one last thing, you might have heard about the acronym CURE around campus. It's a STEM-related acronym, and so this is an initiative that was ignited by Melanie Harvey and Heather Seitz in the sciences, and they got an NSF grant, a little bit over 550,000, to set up course-based undergraduate research experiences. That's where the CURE comes in. And so Cures are actually pretty ideal because students don't have to be specially selected to participate in extracurriculars. They don't have to pay for extra credit hours to do these research experiences, and they don't have to do it outside of courses. All of this work is done inside their, their classroom, and so it actually creates more opportunities for students that might not otherwise have them. It creates a more inclusive space for our students to get that, those STEM projects. It really is interesting, they're doing their own research, and it's really, I mean, I wish I knew more about this, but, so the research experiences are built into the class, but the general idea is, right now, there's two science classes set up to be Cures that are kind of piling in it. And then this year, I believe they are taking, taking applicants to add to the, the pool of candidates that are going to be doing these types of courses for students, and so we will hopefully continue to see that, those opportunities grow for our students. So it's pretty exciting, and I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Andrea. Any questions for Professor View? Melody, Trustee Rail.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Andrea, for the welcome. Certainly, I look forward to working collaboratively with the faculty. You know, obviously, student success starts with teaching in the classroom, and I, I probably know that even better, having lived with my daughter attending classes here full-time for the past couple of years and, and hearing some of the wonderful experiences that she had, including with Dr. Antle in his classroom. And so certainly, I look forward to, to working with the faculty to continue that excellence in teaching that has always been a part of JCCC. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, Trustee Ratan.
The Welcome Week looks really fun. If you do it in the fall, can trustees help out?
Oh, I will, I'm sure we can make that happen. I'm looking at some of the folks that, yeah, and I, I think there's all sorts of things that you can do. I, some of you might know I was out driving a golf cart for a little bit. It was fun. But you can, we have people standing around the buildings, kind of directing people, and there's just a whole bunch of other kinds of things. So I will definitely pass that, that along.
Thank you.
To get you kind of looped into that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Trustee.
I'm glad you asked that question because I had the same thought. We sometimes get forgotten on volunteer things that some of us would have the time or the opportunity or interest to do, so that would be, and welcoming students would be great. I wanted to revisit the Distinguished Service Award because it's not just a nice recognition. It also comes with an incentive, at least it did, and I think it still does.
Yes.
Of a, of an additional stipend or cash, cash compensation.
Yes.
What, what is that?
My, I believe that it is $5,000 across two academic years, so 2,500.
So, yeah. So it's, it's a, it's a nice recognition in multiple ways, so congratulations to you and the other award winners.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Trustee Smith Ever.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to offer my congratulations to you and the other award recipients, and I'm sorry that we didn't have more time to spotlight that in December when it came up. So thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, it really is a great pool of people. I just, so I, you know, I, I know my name's on that list, but I, I'm not just talking about me, of course.
You can touch on.
Some of the names on this list, they do so much work around this campus, and it's, so it's exciting for me to be on that list with them, but to see them recognized, to be honest, so.
I have a few things, if I may. Congratulations. Thank you for sliding that in and letting us know you want to. That, that is exciting. I have to say, I'm unaware of, frankly, too many of the trustees have been stronger allies of the faculty, so I appreciate you, I appreciate Brett. Many of your predecessors helped me learn my job, my role, and grow into the role. I have to say, along with that group was Melody Rail over the years, as I was accepted and really, thanks to trustees Ingram, Lindstrom, and others that I began to know and just worked closely with and build trust. Melody Rail is someone that worked with me in good faith, educated me, and helped me understand and learn and grow in the role. I think, and I voted for her because I thought she had a mix of worldview, fairness, discipline, and experience that we needed right now, given totality of the circumstances, analysis of what we need in the administration, the oversight and, and experience that we needed here. And I like her better than she thinks I do, and so I voted for her. And so I want to frame here at the top, and I appreciate you recognizing her, there's fewer people more committed to this college than Melody Rail. So I wholeheartedly, I asked her, among other people, to run, to put her name in. I asked several other people, too, and I think I've talked to you about that, but Melody had by far the best presentation, and, you know, the faculty or a union doesn't always get what they want, but we need them as a watchdog, and we need them to do things like advocate to Congress to get relief for first responders who were injured in major national catastrophes. Like, unions help make that happen. I believe that unions are a key and critical stakeholder that we need, and I don't care who's uncomfortable, I'm talking, as people are darting around. I think Melody Rail is critical. You may not always, as the FA, get what you want out of her, but I think she'll be fair, and we've got many difficult issues ahead of us, and I needed her here, and I just wanted to communicate in an open forum that I wasn't hiding or trying to dart behind this issue. And so I supported her, and I wanted her here, and I thank you for welcoming her, so.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I think that it's fair to say all of us are here for the student success goal, and I, you know, going back, I think I've in a previous moment when I was here, talked about the KLC, your Leadership Edge Program that I was able to participate in, and one of the things that they do talk about is kind of finding those common points, you know, where we can all work together. And I think, so I do look forward to, to working with you.
Any other questions for Andrea? Otherwise, I'm going to keep talking. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a presentation for the Johnson County Education Research Triangle from Trustee Musa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Johnson County Education Research Triangle was created in 2008 by a vote of the vote, of the Johnson County voters that imposed a 1-8 cent sales tax to raise money for three different programs, the KU Cancer Center, KU Edwards Campus, and the K-State Alatha Campus. 2022 was a very good year when you have a 1-8 cent sales tax and there's inflationary pressures. That raises the amount of sales taxes on what you buy. So compared to 2021, where there was 21.2 million raised for the three institutions, in 2022, there was 24.1, so almost $3 million more, 13 and 1/2% more that will be available to those three, three institutions for programs that will continue to benefit Johnson County.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes.
If I may, any questions for Trustee Musa? Mr. Trustee, I think those are good numbers, right?
Well, they're, they're really good numbers, and, and I think the, the, this J-Cert Board's job is to make sure that those are spent on programming that was approved by the voters with respect to each of those institutions. They all have different, different roles.
And the more financial news I consume, the more I hear about recession and all these other fears that I think are designed to stoke the market, to have all these other fears that I think are designed to stoke the market, to have clickbait, and people listen to their stories or read their news. Uh, that certainly is not any indication of recession, is it, those numbers?
Um, I am not an economist, and we have one hand, so I'm no, but on the other hand, Harriet.
Not to my knowledge, I'm an.
Harriet Truman. No, I don't, I don't, I don't know. If I knew whether there's a recession coming or not, I'd be selling Shorter Law or something.
I think they're pretty strong numbers, is what I'm getting at. Thank you for your time, Mr. Trustee. Uh, the next item we have is the, a report for the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees and the immediate past-present of the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, trustee Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, community college presidents and trustee liaisons attended the Donuts with the legislators' meeting and greeting, meet and greet yesterday in Topeka. Heather Morgan, KACCT Executive Director, Dick Carter, who is our lobbyist, and Jessica Lucas, who is the Calhite Community College lobbyist, also joined the group. We were able to welcome a number of members of our Johnson County delegation, as well as those from across the state. Two of our main talking points were to support the community college budget request for additional funding, as Mr. Carter mentioned a few minutes ago. Um, the governor's budget does not adequately fund community college needs, and additionally, we encourage legislators to support a few clarifications of the PROMIS Act. Regarding the PROMIS Act, KACCT is requesting to include the word "transportation," again, as Mr. Carter explained, which was inadvertently omitted and therefore disqualifies some programs from the Act. The amendment will also allow all elementary and secondary education programs to be eligible at the urging of some legislators. There will also be a private college amendment to clarify something in the bill. Uh, Heather was unclear as to what that might be, but she is expecting something. In addition, at the pre-K Board meeting, and I will just remind everyone, I have stated, um, you know, that we really don't have a, a voice at the K-Board meetings. We had attended a K-Board meeting probably nearly two years ago, and K-Board was meeting with the State Board of Ed. We requested some time, so there is a pre-K Board meeting every month where Heather Morgan, our executive director, as well as two of the board members, um, of the Kansas Board of Regents, um, there is someone representing the technical colleges, their attorney, and then, uh, KACC, KACCT has president or past president, who are also in that, uh, conversation. And we were talking to them about the application process for the PROMIS Act, and when it will be available for student use to apply for the fall semester. So there still seems to be some disconnect there, they are working on that, um, but we are, are, are waiting for that opportunity for that application to be provided so that students can apply for this fall semester. Regarding the governor's budget, uh, the community colleges have requested funds for increased funding for cybersecurity, high school navigators, for, uh, Senate Bill 155 and dual concurrent counseling, funding for salaries for high-demand positions, and capital outlay. Unfortunately, the governor's budget does not include much funding for the two-year sector. KACCT will be working with legislators to advocate for that additional funding. The K-Board meeting yesterday included a number of introductions, college reports, as well as a report from the Educator Workforce Task Force. Mentioned during the task force report was that demographers predict a 15% drop of college-going students in Kansas by 2029. Uh, leadership of Northwest and North Central Technical Colleges, along with Fort Hays State, as we, uh, mentioned earlier, presented the plan for affiliation. It was unanimously approved by K-Board. KACCT, uh, supports this desire and wishes them well, but we will be watching to ensure the details of the bill that must pass through the legislature protects the funding streams and authority of the two-year sector. Updates will be provided throughout the coming months, so we will keep you abreast of that. The next KACCT meeting will be held in Junction City following the Phi Theta Kappa Honors Program Luncheon, which will occur in April.
What day?
And that concludes my report.
What day in April?
I believe it's April the 17th. She did not include that in this report, but I think it's the 17th. I will confirm that for everyone.
Yes, please. Junction City was delightful.
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions for Nancy? What was the drop they were predicting?
Uh, I believe it's 25%.
15, 15.
15, I'm sorry.
15, okay.
By 2029, excuse me, 15%, 2029.
Thank you.
Any other questions for trustee Ingram? Trustee Ingram, thank you for your service at KACT and continuing again this year as the past president.
It's important to be there.
I thank you for being there, and, uh, I sure appreciate your advocacy, and I, the governor is, is a friend and ally, and it's frustrating, her budget always leaves community colleges so short.
That's why we have advocacy.
So thank you for raising the issue, and I'm just supporting you in raising it.
You are.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the Foundation Report from trustee Ratan.
Thank you, Chair, trustee, um, Cross. Summer Chanta evening of 2023 is gonna happen on November the 11th, so mark your calendars. Uh, we also do Johnson Countyan of the Year. If you'd like to nominate anyone, you go to jccc.edu/jcoy to submit nominations. The nominations can come from the public as well. Um, spring semester scholarships are being awarded, and 2023 to 2024 JCCC scholarship applications are open. The Foundation is also gonna host a spring scholarship luncheon on April the 11th of 2023 in the Capitol Federal Room. We'd love to have you there, and we'll send more details soon. The Foundation hosted a Professional Learning Day on January the 10th, and it focused on fundraising efforts around the campus. Uh, the focus of the session was to show how the Foundation can support departmental fundraising activities so that we are sure to stay within IRS guidelines and be the most strategic with our efforts. Uh, the Foundation Winter Board Meeting will happen next week on January the 25th, and then after the business meeting, the Board of Directors will go on a tour of the Nerman exhibit named Adorned. And that is all that I have.
Thank you, Madam Trustee. Any questions for trustee Ratan? Any questions for trustee Ratan? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The, uh, final item we have on our board report is for College Council, and I believe Elisa Waldman will be giving the report.
Good evening. My name is Elisa Waldman. I'm the Vice President of Workforce Development and Continuing Education at the college, but I'm actually here, um, to, uh, share the report from Jason Arnett, who is the Chair of College Council. He was unable to be with us this evening. I am the cabinet member who sits on College Council, um, so he has, he has asked me to deliver his update, um, which follows. College Council met yesterday, um, updates were shared from all of the different governance bodies, um, and new members were welcomed. Among our new members, we had two student senators, um, who were new to College Councils. That was very exciting to include them and, and meet them. Um, discussions of various updates included the lack of compensation for adjuncts serving on committees, living as a leader, being available to all employees, and the upcoming Employee Engagement Survey, which the College Council and all of the shared governance bodies, um, that participate in College Council, um, decided they strongly encourage and will strongly encourage everyone to participate in. Ongoing topics of discussion are academic integrity and communication. Those are being addressed in subcommittees, which are meeting again with the new semester. Um, we want to thank trustee Musel for having, um, been part of the College Council last year, and we are looking very forward to trustee Hamill joining us, um, at our next meeting. That concludes the report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Elisa? Um, Elisa, how much do we pay fac, adjunct faculty on average?
How much do we pay them in terms of their contract to teach?
Yeah.
I will let Dr. McLeod handle that.
Uh, it's around 3,900 per three-hour, three-credit-hour course.
Do they make benefits?
They do not, unless they are a full-time temporary employee, which does happen when we have to overload them up to 15 hours.
Do they have a union?
They do not.
What was your question?
They do have representation on the College Council, so we have one adjunct who sits on the College Council.
Right, but they don't have a formal association like the full-time faculty do?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Elisa? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item we have on our agenda is the Committee Reports and Recommendations. I'll begin with the report for the December Audit Committee that trustee Ingram and I attend. We met on Monday, December 12th, and had an overview presented to us by Heather McCray at the December 15th meeting. An overview was presented, excuse me, at the December 15th Board Meeting, but due to the timing of the committee meeting and the board meeting, uh, the following recommendations are just now being put forth, uh, to the board today. It is the recommendation of the Audit Committee, trustee Ingram and I, that the, the full board approve the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposed audit charter as shown subsequently in the board packet, and I will so move.
A second.
The motion has been moved by myself and seconded by trustee Ingram. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 Those opposed, no. Uh, the motion passes unanimously, thank you. Uh, the next recommendation we have is that the, uh, it's the recommendation of the Audit Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the 2023 Audit Committee Working Agenda, which you can see in your packet, and I will make the mo, motion to approve the working agenda.
A second.
Motion has been moved by myself and seconded by trustee Ingram. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Uh, an opinion of the chair, uh, the vote passes unanimously, and then the next item on our agenda is the Board Governance Committee Report by trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we met at 11:00 AM on Friday, January 6th, right here in this room. Um, I, trustee Musel and I were discussing, it might be appropriate this first time at least, announcing who's on that committee, just.
Sure.
For the public and for anyone watching. So, um, that committee is chaired by myself, and our sitting member is trustee Musel, um, and our Kelsey Nizar and Caitlin Murphy are, are cabinet members assigned to it, so thank you for being there. Um, during the committee, we led a discussion on the board retreat planning. Um, we covered our, um, we covered our, um, sorry, I just lost my place. Uh, the board retreat planning, we led a discussion on the board retreat planning. Moving forward, we discussed the need to set dates for retreats where possible, um, so that for all of our calendars, we kind of know there will be one this month, and there'll be one this month. Um, we were, we proposed recommending a retreat, one per semester. Um, we also discussed the importance of onboarding new trustees. Uh, trustee Rail may be a little bit of a exception to our typical onboarding, so, um, that will probably change, but, um, we are, um, we welcome her, and we are looking forward to her, um, giving us feedback about the onboarding process as we try to adapt and change it for new trustees' needs. Um, we also propose, or went over the, um, recommendations of our board governance committee policies. So we, as a board, have policies that are just about us and governing ourselves, and that's what we went over, and it will, is a recommendation that I will be bringing forward tonight to, uh, approve of the, um, working agenda that kind of sets those out for us to review and, um, adapt and change as we go. So I'll bring that recommendation forward. I'll be making that recommendation, maybe is what I should say.
Very good.
That's a motion I will second.
I was gonna say, I'm making a motion, I guess I should clarify, that's what that was.
Uh, the motion has been moved to adopt the recommendation of, uh, the Board of, Board Governance Committee by trustee Smith Everett, and then seconded by trustee Musel. Any discussion on this point? Seeing, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 And those opposed, no. An opinion of the chair, motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, if I can, because I didn't want to situate it there, um, I just wanted to speak for a second about the first, um, our first go at, um, Multiple Committee Day, and, um, I, I wanted to thank our staff. I, I thought it went off without a hitch. Um, it ran really smoothly, at least from my vantage point, I think several of you mentioned it, too, and that really goes, speaks to the hard work of our staff in making sure that, um, it, everything was prepared and ready to go, so I thank them for that. Um, I wanted to also, um, just speak to, and I wrote it out, just so I don't kind of get lost, um, that I think the new structure that we have, um, will do a better job of serving our board and, um, the work that we have to do as a college moving forward. And, um, I know for all those of us that were on the subcommittee that recommended this new committee structure, the committee on committees, um, we felt really strongly in our discussions that we kind of need to have a fresh perspective in how we, um, do committee work, and I wanted to echo that now, because I think we're kind of at the beginning of how we will move forward in this, and I think that the, um, in the coming months, I, I would like to charge all of us, both the cabinet members that are assigned to these committees and you're stuck with, working with us, I'm sorry about that, um, but also our board members, that we, um, I, I think for, when you have a trustee, Board of Trustee meeting, it is a more polished, um, opportunity, and, and people want to come and present, but I hope that, um, moving forward, we can really take the committee days as an opportunity to have a two-way dialogue and be really honest, and, um, be able to do the work that we all have said on the strategic plan is important for us, and that it not feel that, um, cabinet has to be presenting or showing only the best, but we can have honest conversations about where we need to grow. I think, um, one of the quotes I really loved from one of our candidates last week was, "Sometimes when you're at the top, it's hard to know and see where the areas for growth are." And I think we've identified some of those, and the only way we're gonna really be able to solve them is being able to work together on that in a way that's constructive and honest. And so I just wanted to make that, um, assertion about the, the way we can move forward with committees and make it be a real two-way dialogue. There are times we need a lot of education, and there's times that I think our perspective, which is a community representative, is very different than those that work internally, you know, at the college. So that is, um, the conclusion of my comments on that.
Thank you very much. Any, any questions or other comments on that point? Uh, I'll take a moment and just say, trustee Smith Everett, I concur with you, and I, I thank the administration greatly for moving back, uh, to a structure that more closely resembled our previous one. Um, I know from time to time, I, I can be competitive, you can ask trustee Musel, but, uh, I argue for a living, and it's hard to, to get it out of me, so if from time to time, uh, I'm too combative, competitive, I, I apologize. Uh, I, I feel, and trustee Ingram and I spent a lot of time this past year talking to Dr. Bound about, uh, we, we need a window into the weeds, and in, in a two-hour committee of the whole, there just isn't a lot of opportunity to see, hear, or understand certain information that, uh, frankly, as a trustee that served for a while, and I, I'd like to thank trustee Musel and Ingram feel the same way, we, we just weren't simply getting the same information or opportunity to learn things that we wanted to see and hear. Some of them we don't need to, frankly, to be in the weeds, but I think it's an investment over time, uh, in what trustee Smith Everett said, a two-way street where we can see and learn. And part of the reason I asked Andrew, uh, Alicia before the meeting about the, uh, safety packets was to, to say, and I've said this many times, and I, I can't say it enough, the professional staff of this organization's made me look smart numerous times, which is not an easy get, so I really appreciate that, and, um, you know, I'm proud that Dr. Weber and other people have gone on to be presidents from this place, and he and I didn't always get along, I can assure you, but the professional job that he did, and that all of you did through the pandemic, and to, to come through that difficult ordeal in the manner we did is appreciated, and you are appreciated, and I think the committee structure will be an investment both ways, so that we can all see, learn, and understand what goes on here and, and the direction and the policies we want to set. So I thank you, and I, I thank the, uh, the trustee for, for recognizing that issue. Unless there's anything else on that point, uh, the next item we have is Collegial Steering. I, I'm listed to give the presentation, but I've asked trustee Ingram to do so, please.
And that would be because?
I was late. I was late, you ran the meeting.
You're so honest. That's part of that honest discussion we're gonna have here. Anyway, no, I appreciate being able to do it. Um, Collegial Steering met on the 10th. Um, actually, the only agenda item there was, and I wrote it down so that I would remember it, the Board of Trustees' view on, uh, prominent opportunities and challenges for JCCC over the coming years. And we kind of started out with the, um, the discussion on enrollment, and, um, just, just talked briefly about it, but it being part of the low-hanging fruit, it's easy for us to, you know, it's just one of those questions that we always get asked about. But we did also talk about the importance, and I think one of the things that Dr. But we did also talk about the importance, and I think one of the things that Dr. Bound has so strongly urged us to consider was really the retention of those students from fall to spring, and how much we have made an improvement on that. And that really kind of changes the way that you approach enrollment, to a degree. And I'm gonna speak a little more about enrollment on my student success committee report, so I'm not, I'm not gonna elaborate anymore about that. One of the other things that I mentioned, we basically just kind of came with some items, I'll let you bring up yours and discuss the things that you mentioned, if you'd like, but I talked a little bit briefly about accountability, talked about improving communication, we talked about hiring and the situation that we find ourselves in with so many people retiring this year. And it isn't a concern that we, that, it's a concern because we've lost a number of people, yes, but in the hiring process, what that does to our employees who are here, as far as the expectations of mentoring, of bringing people on board, how that kind of changes the folks that we have already working here. So, there's a lot of sensitivity around that, and so that was one of the things that I mentioned. And then I talked a little bit about the committees, too, and how I feel like, one of the best things about the committee day to me, and again, I'm personalizing this because it's a smaller group and collegial steering that we're talking to, but I spoke to the fact that between the meetings, and at one point, we had probably 30 minutes between one of our meetings, I was sitting up here, we had just presented, completed, had our meeting, and everyone in the room was talking. The discussions that were going on, the communication between, just what you were talking about, staff, administration, the board, and everyone who was in the room was just talking, and that felt so good, and I think that's particularly because we have all lived through the past couple of years where things have been a little more challenging. So, those were some of the top things. I mean, you can always get into a lot of different areas of discussion, but for me, it was just, you know, getting communication and making sure that that is where it needs to be. We didn't talk about some of the very obvious things that have been talked about over the past couple of years, like shared governance, some of those issues, but we just kind of brought it back to, you know, being there for one another, too, is what I feel like is really important. So, anyway, did you have anything you wanted to add?
You're too scared to say the things I said?
Nope.
Well, I may have blacked out, I don't remember everything, but I know we talked about enrollment, I know there's great frustration about enrollment, and it's our job as politicos to deal with the issues and take the heat, and I know that there is some low-hanging fruit, and I know there's people who feel like they're doing everything they can, and yet there's immense pressure on an institution to bring budgets under control while enrollment, even if stabilizing, are declining, and it's just a reality, fair or unfair, it's an unfair game. So, I know I talked about that, I know I explained my vote for Melody Rail, and I thank Andrea View and Brett Cooper and everybody else in the room for listening, and the opportunity to explain my thoughts on what I did, and I'm proud of it, and...
That brings up one other thing.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
No, if you don't mind me interrupting, but you're right there. We were asked about the board, and how we felt about the board. And I'm very proud to say that it was easy enough to say, we feel really good about the board.
We have, I think, a very good board, and I haven't been able to say that in a while, and we certainly could last year, I'm not saying we couldn't, but it's, we're in a good place, and it came up with respect to items that we needed as we have transitions within our cabinet, and we're making adjustments within the administration to deal in the current environment and to deal with current realities. I mean, the governor's budget the last two years has not included community college, that much money for community colleges, so that's just a difficult issue that we have to face, all the while our local taxpayers are, have carried a heavy burden for the past many years. On the committee structure, I offered my thoughts, and I'm a big fan, even if I'm not on any of the committees, I still plan to go to all of them, so I know what's going on, and it was fun to see different trustees have different roles and interactions for trustee Ratan and Hamel to be on committees and to be more charged with asking questions and providing direct oversight. I appreciate the opportunity, because as a younger trustee, whether it was Andy Anderson or Dennis Day or Barb Larson or Judy Korbe or even just drinking beer with Randy Weber in San Francisco, it's the opportunity to see what goes on here, hear what goes on here, hear dedicated professionals, you know, I'd see Chris Gray at dance classes with our daughters, you know, so just having that opportunity to see and hear the real human beings doing the work, it gives us some experience, and I don't want to be in the toothpicks, but we need to see what's going on so we know what's going on, and we can report back to our constituencies, and among those, I promise you, my wife's never watched any of these meetings and doesn't care, but I've got other people that do, and, you know, we need to speak intelligently in those conversations. So, I thank you for running the meeting. I think with respect to shared governance, I've used that meeting in part to have a more direct conversation with the faculty leadership. I typically do have many on my own, but I thank you, Andrea and Brett and everyone for being there, and that's what I remember.
And I would just conclude the report with what you said earlier, Andrea, we are all here for student success, and I think that's what brings us together, so thank you for sharing that, and I think we should share it all the time, so thank you. Dr. McLeod, do you, can you respond to the governor's funding last year? Was that correct?
I believe that the governor is in a bit of a pinch in her approach, because if you were to ask the Board of Regents, they believe themselves to coordinate us, but to be responsible for the universities. And with that charge, I think her approach is one that really focuses on trying to make sure that the universities are front-loaded in that thinking, but I do think that there needs to be a recognition in her approach, that a lot of the workforce training that occurs in the state, a lot of the work that happens to prepare under-prepared students to actually attend those universities occurs at the community college, and that that support needs to be much more robust. If the universities are to be successful, they will not be without us.
But we did relatively well.
We did incredibly well last year in terms of...
Not after the initial budget, not after her initial budget was lifted.
Yes. It was with, it was with the second round of funding, where we straightened out the shortage, and a big part of that is the underfunding of what is historically known as Senate Bill 155, which is the Excel and CTE Act. That act historically was created with the idea that the funding was based on the number of students who were eligible for career and technical education courses during the year the legislation was written. The adjustment forethought, however, is that once you agree that you're going to help fund or pay for something, more folks who maybe were not in the pipeline will find themselves more eager to get into the pipeline, and there had not been the forethought to really get out in front of planning extended funding for Senate Bill 155, and we have seen year over year, there being a larger number of students wanting to be engaged in that, and yet the funding was set at a level that was not keyed to fit that growth, and that continues to be a problem year over year.
Okay, well, thank you for that, I appreciate that, and that concludes our report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for trustee Ingram? Any questions for trustee Ingram? And I'll say this, I love Laura Kelly, Governor Kelly, and I love the leaders of the legislature, many of whom I do know personally, and Jesus even told me to love Kris Kobach, but when criticism is due, I'm gonna give it, and the governor's original budget last year was not favorable to us, just to explain my thoughts, because I know Molly Baumgartner's watching, but in case Laura Kelly's watching, I'm just saying, you know, I know the Regents took a hit, and I know that they had a rough decade also, but it's a zero-sum game, and in the race and rivalries within the Kansas State budget, you know, my job is to look out for this college, so, and for the citizens of Johnson County. So, thank you for raising the issues, I just wanted to explain my vote, or my thoughts, and...
Thank you.
You raise the issue. The next item on our agenda is the Employee Engagement and Development Committee, and trustee Hamel will be making that presentation.
All right, thank you. The Employee Engagement and Development Committee also met on committee day here on Friday, January 6th, right here in the boardroom. I chaired that with Nancy Ingram. Colleen Chandler was here, the interim vice president of Human Resources, and she presented the agenda for 2023. She indicated that we'll plan on meeting six times throughout the year, including January, February, April, June, September, and November. The minutes for the agenda are on page 13 and 14, if anybody wants more details on it. One of the big things we covered was the career laddering project and the RFP Evaluation Committee. If we approve that from Culpeper and Associates, after the approval, the HR will begin working on with that vendor, developing a project timeline, which we've indicated is probably about 18 months. We also talked about the internal equity project. We have the 2.1 set aside for that, that we are basically also on the timeline of approximately six months to try to get that completed. And we went through VERB and talked about the fact that we lost total 69 of our employees that decided to take that advantage of the VERB program at that point in time. So, what do I have? Anybody has any questions? Nancy, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I don't think so, you did a nice job of running that meeting.
All right, thank you.
And that concludes your report.
That concludes my report.
Any questions for trustee Hamel?
Can I just ask a quick one? Where does the career laddering fall within your working agenda? Is that review and update personnel policy? Do you know, I don't know, maybe it'd be better, where the, I know that's part of the big thing that we have been asking for. Where would the career laddering fall for, within the working agenda?
I don't know that I know, and if trustee Hamel doesn't know, we can ask Colleen.
Trustee Smith Everett, it actually has the potential to fall in multiple areas, depending on what part of the process we're talking about, but in general, you'll see updates for that included in the fourth item of the working agenda related to initiatives.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And I believe we need to adopt the working agenda for the Employee Engagement and Development Committee. Trustee Hamel, would you mind reading that recommendation?
Yeah, it is a recommendation of the Employee Engagement and Development Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the 2023 Employee Engagement Development Committee Working Agenda.
And you so move?
I so move.
I'll second.
The motion has been made by trustee Hamel and seconded by trustee Ingram. Any discussion, any further discussion on this point? Seeing, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion passes unanimously, and that, and you're finished, I'm sorry, just to put a bow on that.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a report for the Inclusion and Belonging Committee by trustee Ratan.
The Inclusion and Belonging Committee met at 2:00 p.m. on Friday, January 6th, in this boardroom. Professor Andrea View presented a brief history of recent DEI efforts at JCCC and reviewed the DEI strategic plan. I'm gonna back up a little bit and give you attendees. We're Dawn Ratan, Laura Smith Everett, Dr. Bound, Caitlin Murphy, Kate Allen, Dr. Mickey McLeod, Dr. Judy Korbe, Mark, I don't know how to say his last name, Lee Cox, and Sylvia Aralano Fernandez as our recorder. Key to this goal area is the creation of a DEI position on campus. The position is intended to be a resource for all, including employees, students, and partners, with a focus on student success. The job will be posted in January. Additional discussion continued around establishing benchmarks, metrics, and improving awareness of current inclusion activities on campus. The proposed 2023 Inclusion and Belonging Committee Working Agenda was presented and discussed. Therefore, it's the recommendation of the Inclusion and Belonging Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the 2023 Inclusion and Belonging Committee Working Agenda, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been made by trustee Ratan and seconded by trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion on this point? Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
And all those opposed, please say no. Motion passes unanimously.
Chair, I'd like to add one more thing, the next meeting is on March 1st at 2:00 p.m.
Very good. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is a report for the Management and Finance Committee by the man, the myth, and the legend, the victorious Wildcat, trustee Musel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Management and Finance Committee met early on committee day, starting at 8:30 a.m. The first committee, my other member on the committee is trustee Hamel. We also met for an hour and a half, so we are entitled to 1.5 times pay.
Can I interrupt you right there? The greatest quote of the whole day was you sitting in the back corner like at 2:30 saying, "Still the leader in the clubhouse." Still the leader in the clubhouse.
Yeah, yeah, we took the most amount of time to get through our committee. The information related to the meeting can be found on pages 17 to 24 of the board packet. We received reports from Courtney Holtgren, the program director of the Hurstiner Child Development Center, highlighted some of the challenges being faced in a childcare center that's more than a childcare center, a development center, scholarship and grant opportunities for JCC students, and faculty and staff opportunities, and community opportunities for using this wonderful facility, and plans for some upcoming enhancements to the Child Development Center. We also heard from Dr. Sandra Warner, executive director of Mission Continuity and Risk Management, giving a semi-annual update on the college and national trends, our insurance premiums, work comp experience, and efforts to align our mission continuity and risk management to the college's strategic priorities. That is a very recent effort, the last two, two and a half years, and served us very well during the COVID pandemic. We have a number of recommendations tonight, and I'll try to go through those quickly, they're all listed in your packet. The first one is the replacement of the gym, the lower-level gym fieldhouse resilient athletic flooring replacement on page 18. It is a recommendation of the committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the bid from Kiefer USA for gym fieldhouse resilient athletic flooring replacement in the amount of $593,340, with an additional 10% contingency of $59,334 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for total estimated expenditure of And I would make that motion.
The motion has been made by trustee Musel and seconded by trustee Hamel. Any discussion on this item?
I'm gonna mention one thing right now, because we talked about it at the committee meeting. When we say for a total estimated expenditure, we're saying really for an amount not to exceed, because almost, most of the time, we don't spend the contingency. It is in there so staff has the authority to spend it if necessary, if something unforeseen comes up. So, we probably should not say a total estimated expenditure, it's really a not-to-exceed number, $652,674, and that will be true for other bids where we build in the contingency.
Trustee Ratan.
Oh, it seems that we usually take the lowest bid in most of these items. Is there a reason why we took the highest bid in this case?
There was, and it was explained at the committee level, I don't know if Janelle or, and I know trustee Hamel, you took a tour of it, so you probably, you may be able to explain this, but...
That's a good question.
Yeah, absolutely. This one typically, this was an RFP, so we looked at a lot of factors other than price, price was one factor. The reason this particular vendor was selected, I'm looking at notes, because there were several, is that this, the material that was bid on this most closely matched the requirements. It was a specific brand, and we would look at alternatives to that as long as it meets the same criteria, and this one was the best fit. Excuse me. Hang on, I have to get back to my notes. That's what I get for trying to balance too many things at once.
Yeah, all right, thank you for being here.
So, a request for proposal is looking for, not necessarily the low bid, although trustee Ratan is right, we are very often taking the low bid even where it's, there's a qualification involved, and we have a justification in our packet, but I think it's fair to ask additional questions. So, if there's anything else to add, Janelle or trustee Hamel, do you?
Yeah, I'll say, I want to thank Tom for setting up the, showing up the viewing of the facility, and we had the A.D. and the assistant A.D., Jim Dyson, Tony. So, one of the things they were showing is that they weren't, some of those weren't fitting everything we absolutely needed and wanted for that facility, and one of the things was the longevity of how long this is supposed to last. This one is supposed to last 20 years, that was one of the things we're paying a little extra for, but it should last longer. He also went through the area where we're gonna save more revenue, and we're gonna be able to support the community with the facilities we're putting in here, not just the, you know, members of the college as well. So, again, we're spending almost, you know, over half a million dollars, I want to make sure we get it right, we're spending the money correctly, and, you know, I want to again thank everybody for showing me the tour of the facility, showing me their vision, and it looks like the right thing for me as well, so thank you.
Trustee Hamel said it better than I could have. It's a thicker flooring, it has some features that allows it to give us the best value for the money.
Yeah.
And it should see more revenue. While we have you, Trustee Rattan, any, any further questions?
No, I'm done.
Okay. Any other questions while we have Janelle, Trustee Smith?
I just wondered the age of the current floor that we're replacing.
My recollection is it's over twenty years old. It was resurfaced in about 2013.
Yes.
So, even the resurfacing is nine years old. It has lasted longer than we thought it would. And so, this was one where it seemed like we had truly gotten the life out of the material.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all. Any other questions for Janelle or the committee here?
Our committee meeting is really exciting, so come on and hear all about it.
Trustee Muzel.
We need to vote on that.
Oh, yes. Any other discussion on this, on this item? And thank you for asking, Trustee Rattan. I was going to. Any other discussion on this item? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
The next item is a single purchase based on an RFP on page nineteen of the packet. And I'll make the motion and then explain something about it. It is a recommendation of the, of the committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the low bid from KCAV for multimedia services equipment for a total estimated expenditure of $296,212.9. And I would so move.
Second.
The motion has been moved by Trustee Muzel and seconded by Trustee Hamel. Any discussion on this item?
Just, there were twenty-three different line items, and so we looked for the low bid in each of them. The winning bidder had the low bid for seventeen of the twenty-three items, and there's an administrative efficiency with going with one source. So, that's, that's why the bid is as it is.
Any other discussion on this point?
I'll say, one of the things that I was asking was, you know, how it was being used across the campus. And it sounds like the majority of this was being used for replacement parts that has things that get used up and worn out, so.
No, thank you for being there. Thanks for asking questions. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
The next item, Mr. Chair, is a purchase of a wide-format printer. It is a single purchase item. It is a recommendation of the committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the purchase of a wide-format printer from Canon Solutions for a total expenditure of $243,363. And no sense, and I would so move.
Second.
The motion has been made by Trustee Muzel and seconded by Trustee Hamel. Any discussion on this item?
This is another item where it was an RFP, and there were qualifications of the various things. You'll see some lower bids there, ranging from $75,000 up to the bid of $243,000. The evaluation team determined this was the best, best overall bid for the college. And Trust, or Vice President Chris Gray indicated the amount of money that would be saved by having this as opposed to sending some of these printing jobs outside the campus, both on a timely basis and a, and a cost basis. So, it made sense to Trustee Hamel and I, I think, if I can speak for Mark.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I believe Chris said we're looking at saving around $300,000 a year by making this purchase. Is that correct? Okay.
And I got to say, if I'm, unless there's any other input, my wife and I recently took bids on a couple of different things. And until you do it, you don't believe the wide range of bids you get on a project. And now, some people frankly miss the mark. And I'm not, it's no statement on these. I wasn't, I was in the back not paying full attention, but I'm just saying, thank you for explaining what went on here. Any other discussion on this point? Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
Next item is Human Resources Job Architecture Vendor. The recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the bid from Culpeper and Associates for a total estimated expenditure of $389,995.90. And I would so move.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved, moved by Trustee Muzel and seconded by Trustee Hamel. Any discussion on this item?
I pointed this out at the meeting, and it's been, it's been referenced in the Employee Engagement Committee report, that this is the vendor that we have talked about with respect to creating the job architecture, job families, and then also doing the competitive market study. So, it is a very important vendor. And I think we asked questions of Colleen or others at the, at the meeting to, to be comfortable that this is a good vendor that has good experience, knows what they're doing, and will do a good job in this most important endeavor.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
The final item on the bid packages is an external grant evaluator for National Science Foundation grants. This is a requirement that a third-party review grant, grants that would be, that would come to the college from the National Science Foundation. And it is a recommendation of the committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve a proposal from University of Missouri, Kansas City for external grant evaluator services for a base share of $30,000 and a total estimated expenditure of $150,000, including renewal options through 2028. UMKC was the only respondent to this RFP, but has history in doing this, and was determined to meet the needs that we have for our National Science Foundation grant applications. I'd so move.
Thank you.
Second.
The motion has been moved by Trustee Muzel and seconded by Trustee Hamel. Any discussion on this item? I will say that I'm a, Trustee Rail, and I are proud UMKC graduates.
Proud Ruse.
So, I'm glad that, that they were able to do this, and they sure take care of our students. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
Final item, Mr. Chair, is a, is a recommendation for approval of the 2023 Management and Finance Committee Working Agenda on pages twenty-three and twenty-four of your packet, and I would so move.
Second.
The motion has been made by Trustee Muzel and seconded by Trustee Hamel. Any discussion on this item? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
That concludes the report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee. The next item on our agenda and the final report is for our Student Success, formerly our Learning Quality Committee, by Trustee Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Student Success Committee met at 10:00 AM on Friday, January the sixth, 2023, in the, in this very room. Among those in attendance, including myself, were Dr. McCloud, Dr. Corb, and Pam Vassler. Our first order of business included the presentation of the working agenda. And let me back up and say that the minutes are found on pages twenty-five through twenty-seven of the board packet. Forgive me. Dr. McCloud presented the working agenda. And as a result of that review, we do have a recommendation to present, and I will go ahead and do that at this time. It is the recommendation of the Student Success Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the 2023 Student Success Committee Working Agenda. And I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made by Trustee Ingram and seconded by Trustee Muzel. Any discussion on the return of the working agenda for the Student Success Committee? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. At our meeting, also, Dr. Corb provided historical context to the strategic enrollment efforts at JCCC. John Clayton shared the most recent enrollment data for spring 2023 for both the number of students enrolled and credit hours. He added, "These metrics will continue to change between now and census day." Leslie Quinn, Pete Bell, Jim Lane, and Natalie Allman Byers provided an overview and update of the historical and ongoing efforts of the Strategic Enrollment Management Team. They emphasized the collaborative and campus-wide efforts to engage with students and their families, both on the campus and in the community. Efforts to update and streamline processes to remove barriers, provide options, and meet student needs were outlined. Acknowledging the numerous factors, both internal and external, to the college that impact enrollment, it was noted that no plan can guarantee an increase in enrollment, but JCCC can provide continuous improvement of quality excellence in academics and other offerings. The team will continue their work to develop a long-range strategy to meet the enrollment needs and opportunities of the community. The next Student Success Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February first, 2023, at 10:00 AM in UW Spirit Board Room. And at that time, we will welcome Trustee Rail to join us at that meeting. That concludes my report, but I, much like several other people, would like to give just a short, little, brief comment about enrollment. And I did say, when we were talking earlier, that I would probably bring something up. But as a reminder, one of the things that has really struck me, and I've shared this with this board before, that in working with some of our homeless population in Olathe, there was a student one time that we were working on the facts that didn't have the information. That student literally said to me, "Nobody told me I could." And that has resonated with me. And so, I just want to share very briefly, if one could predict, I think you'll always hear us advocating for enrollment. Not enrollment for enrollment's sake, but to make sure that every student is able to hear you can.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, much like you as well, just want to say thank you to everyone. We were kind of concluding, this is the final report of those committees of Committee Day. And Laura kind of took the wind out of the sails, because you did thank everyone, but I also wanted to thank everyone. And I'm sure I speak for all of us in saying thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to say to Trustee Rail, both my brothers were enlisted Marines, and I appreciate the enlisted greatly. So, because I never dated anybody that didn't tell me I wasn't hypersensitive, I apologize for that. I just was trying to encourage the kid to be an officer. Thank you. And can somebody on the committee on committees tell me, where does Trustee Rail sit now on the committees?
Student Success. I just invited her to Student Success.
Okay. But anything else? She gets one committee?
She said yes. So, no. I think at this point, that's it.
One committee?
Yes.
There's so many committees. Maybe you can get a pickup committee.
There you go.
Get you a pickup committee.
Okay.
We'll create a committee.
The next item on our agenda is the President's Recommendations for Actions, and we'll begin tonight with the Treasurer's Report by Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Treasurer's Report can be found on pages twenty-eight through thirty-nine of your board packet. The packet includes the month ended November thirtieth, 2022. Some items of note include page one, which has the general post-secondary technical educational funds, which are the primary operating funds of the college. The general fund unencumbered cash balance was $84 million as of November thirtieth, 2022, a decrease of $7 million from the previous year. This budget decrease is due to the renovation of the Science NCLB buildings, which is being funded by the general fund reserves. Expenditures in the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits. It is a recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ended November thirtieth, 2022, subject to audit, and I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Motion has been made by Trustee Smith Everett and seconded by Trustee Ingram. Any discussion on the Treasurer's Report? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. And I believe that concludes your report.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Monthly report to the board now. Pinch hitting for Dr. Bound is Dr. Mickey McCloud.
All right. So, what you're going to get tonight is a little bit of a team approach to presenting the President's Report. One of the things I've learned over the years is when you have people smarter than you, you delegate and let them handle it. And so, we will be hearing a couple of things. You've already heard about the great success of Alan Lopez, who was named our D1 National Scholar Player of the Year in soccer. You had the opportunity to hear about the, the journey and path of Joel Huyabon, who is coming through here as a music student. Joel will also be one of the first recipients when he reaches the end of our Associate of Fine Arts degree, which is, is something we pressed for pretty heavily at the state level, as community colleges did not have a fine arts degree until about a year and a half ago, when we finally got Kabor to agree with us that a pathway for students in the arts was necessary, based on the fact that the AA did not appropriately transfer the credit hours into the fine arts programs for BFAs at any of our state institutions. And so, that has been a huge piece, and it was pretty gratifying personally for me to see a student who's taking advantage of something that we worked pretty hard to get approved, considering that there was lots of question about whether such a thing was necessary. And we provided quite a bit of evidence from students here at Johnson County about their trials and tribulations and attempting to transfer without an appropriately aligned degree in fine arts. And so, we will begin tonight with a look at continuing education and continuing education enrollment, and then segue into credit enrollment. And so, you will get an opportunity to hear from Elisa Waldman, as well as get an opportunity to hear from John Clayton.
Thank you. There we go. So, I will be brief, but just an update on this month. Our enrollment is at 1,850 non-credit continuing education students. So, there's good news and bad news in that. The, the negative news, of course, is that we are down from where we were last year, as, as we were last month. But last month, we were down by about forty percent. This month, we are down by about thirty percent. So, we are hopefully closing that gap. But much of it, again, is in, in due, in part, over the last few years, to the fact that we had that immense amount of federal funding that was, benefited many, many students. This week, we had JCA enrollment for both ESL and GED courses. So, I can tell you, at this point, we have four hundred people signed up to take their evaluation testing for ESL, and we have two hundred and fifty spots. So, that demand is growing as always, and, and they are doing a wonderful job serving the community. So, that, that's all I've got for you. I think John has a little more detail on the credit side, but any questions?
Could you help me remember what JCA, ESL, and GED are?
Absolutely. And I'm sorry, thank you for asking. Johnson County Adult Education. And under that grant-funded program, we offer both the GED. So, for those who want to get their high school general education degree, if they do not complete at an, at a high school, they may take that test, series of tests. And ESL is English as a second language.
Those are such important programs that we do, and everybody here, I think, is, knows that my favorite graduation ceremony is the GED one. So, I want to highlight those.
Thank you.
More and more people, our GED program, I don't know, where are we on our GED program as far as enrollment? I mean, I, just to report someday, because I know we had, several years ago, they changed the test, and we were way down. And then we had COVID. And so, finding out how we are doing with GED students.
I will share that with you next month. I will share that with you next month in the, in the enrollment update. But I do know that we have had a record number of GED graduates so far this year.
Great. Thank you.
Trustee Smith Everett.
I was going to say, at the, at the graduation, I was told it was a banner year.
It was.
Last year, incredible resurgence from the COVID slide. I also wanted to speak and cheer on the, the ESL program. As a former teacher in the program, it is still near and dear to my heart. And I just wanted to share with you all a little anecdote. This past weekend, my school, which is right down the street from One Arm, the, the division on Grant, is right down the street from the school, the public school where I teach. We have since last February been having a food bank. And so, we're a harvester's food bank, drive-through spot. And last week, we served a hundred and eighty-five families, I think it was. But what the interesting part was, is we've had quite an increase in the Ukrainian families that are coming through. And they're incredible. And, and the language barrier is really difficult, because it's not like Spanish, where some people know a little bit. And we can kind of, between the parties figure out, but they, they have learned how to write things out, which was great. But all that to say that I know that that ESL program is one that has been mentioned by other educators I know in my district personally, who have Ukrainian families. And the adults are begging for any kind of education for themselves, because they don't know how long they're going to be here. And English is just really difficult. So, I, I know that it's a grant program, and we're kind of locked in. But if there's ever a way for us to expand that even on a temporary basis, especially in light of the war going on, and the fact that Kansas City will probably still continue to receive more families from areas where English is the currency that you have to have to survive in the United States, and it's a really critical one for adults. So, thank you so much. And that program is beloved. I, I drive by it almost daily, and it is such a wonderful program.
And I'm going out on a limb here, speaking for Janice Blansett and her team at Johnson County Adult Ed. But if you ever want to observe the classroom atmosphere there, it is very different than what you'll see in a classroom on campus. All of the is very different than what you'll see in a classroom on campus. All of the learners are at different levels. And so the instructor is individuating the learning to each student. There might be 20 students in a class, and they're all learning different things at the same time. It's very impressive. It's mind-boggling and very impressive. So we would welcome you to take a look.
Elisa, I want to share with you, I found a book this past weekend on Audible called The Summer of '85, and it was about the strife and problems that the city of Philadelphia had with a cult movement named Move in the 70s and 80s. And part of that cult got its membership in part because of an illiterate portion of the city. And I thought about what we do here, and at various points in my life and career, I've seen people focus on adult literacy and GED, and just to say thank you, because making sure people can read is a key part, I think, of civil society and our citizenry. So I thought I'd share that book with you. Kevin Hart narrates it. He's a Philadelphian. I didn't know that. And thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
And one more question, actually. Any of the members of the GED program that graduate, do we get any of those come into college here? And you know what kind of rate that is, if we have that information?
We do. And I'll get you those exact numbers. I don't want to misspeak. But we do track that. We have two transition coaches among the JCA staff, and they specifically work with those students to help them identify how they can transition to JCC. And we have several classes that meet on campus, so that they're in the higher level, so that they're starting to, I'm sorry, that's on the ESL side, but so they're starting to get a flavor for campus as well. But absolutely, and I'll get you those numbers.
Excited to see that. Thank you.
And trustee Amel, if I may, just to quote Dr. McLeod, his exact response was, "Oh, yeah."
Quite a few. And there is also scholarship opportunities for students who come from the GED program. So several of those students actually receive a lot of funding to help them continue their education here.
At the graduation last year, the speaker won one of the scholarships, and his wife, who was in the audience, was the most excited. She let everyone know who she was. She was so excited about his scholarship.
And if I recall, we usually give them enough of a small scholarship for one class, and this last year, we gave them enough money to do two courses, right?
Correct. So every GED graduate receives the opportunity to attend two, is it six hours?
It's six hours for everyone, but there are full-time scholarships that are also awarded to the highest achievers in the GED course.
I like that there's something for everyone as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
I could just go on. These are parents of children in public school. We know that they are coming to this program. It is critical for literacy. It is critical for family success. It is critical for economic participation in our local economy, and it is such an important part of the community. So thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And Elisa's correct. I'm going to be a little more verbose than what she was. You know, it is wonderful to be able to stand up here this evening and report our opening day enrollment for spring of 2023 is, drumroll, up. You know, on page one of the report that's there in front of you, the college is actually up 3.9% in headcount and 3.4% in credit hours. As of opening day, JCC was outperforming our regional peers by nearly 6%. I'll let you do the math and kind of figure out where they're at. To aid in the readability of the report, you'll notice that there's been some corresponding color boxes matching the lines in the chart that were added over the related comparison data at the top of the page. This helps you align which year we're actually comparing to. I want to take a moment to make a few additional highlights from the report. On page two, while up overall by 2.2% in female enrollment, the college continues to be down in female ages 25 to 29 years of age by negative 3.1%, or 73 students, as you can see there. However, it is encouraging to point out the gap has decreased by nearly two percentage points since I last reported that to you in early January. Related, a similar lag is also noticeable in continuing females of negative 3.7%, or 166 females. A continuing student has enrolled in consecutive semesters without last been enrollment, not counting summers. So they've gone from fall to spring, spring to fall type of enrollment. So just to help you understand that that definition is.
John, where was the negative 3.7? Sorry?
That should be on the, let me pull up my report here.
Oh, to the right.
Should be to the right, I believe.
Yes. Oh, I see. I'm sorry. Thank you.
It's on the actual student type, or student population is the word that we use.
I missed it. Thank you.
No. Nationally, according to a recent report from the National Student Clearinghouse Research Center, new data shows that gender disparities in fall 2022 college freshman enrollment with female students are opting out at more than twice the rate of males. According to Catherine Brown, the senior director of policy and advocacy for the National College attainment network, the pandemic disproportionately harmed women, particularly women of color and of low income. She noted that women were often the ones who stepped up to homeschool the kids, take care of children, parents, and other people with health issues. I want to move on to page three now. And when we disaggregate our data by race and ethnicity, the only group to not experience an increase was the African-American or the black population, which is a negative 9.2%. Now, there is an offsetting increase in the unknown category of 18.2%. So it could be possible these students have just chosen not to identify, but we really don't know. However, the Joint Center for the Political and Economic Studies, this is a think tank that's focused on advancing black communities, recently released a report and found staggering enrollment declines of 18% among the black community. And that was specifically during the COVID-19 pandemic. According to the report, a mix of factors are likely contributing to this decline. There's concerns over the cost of attendance of higher education. There's concerns with barriers such as food, housing, and some other unemployment securities. Also on page three is, in the race and ethnicity category, is the college continues to experience an extraordinary growth in Hispanic students, 17.7% increase from last spring, or an additional 261 Hispanic students comparatively. This currently is making up 13.7% of the total student population this spring here on campus. For reference, in spring of 2019, and remember, that's actually pre-COVID, okay, so I went clear back to pre-COVID, Hispanic students only made up about 10% of the population here at the college. Not only is this ethnicity the fastest-growing in Johnson County, it is also the fastest-growing race and ethnicity subsegment of the college's population. This is due to intentional effort and focus by the college out of the last strategic plan to hire a recruiter to focus intentionally on the Hispanic enrollment. And that happened roughly about five to six years ago, is what I believe.
Do we still have that position?
We do, yes. Yep. In other populations on page three, I'm going to point you down to the college's evening enrollment. That's down just below. And we noticed that there's a significant decline of negative 24.2% or 694 students. And that's significant. That's a little over 3,000 credit hours decline. This is most likely due to a realignment of enrollment due to course caps that were put in place on all courses during the COVID-19 pandemic. The removal of course caps started in fall of '22, and, you know, for social distancing purposes, and this likely caused some of the evening enrollment to move to more daytime courses. And the institutional research staff has began to explore the data to see whether or not this is actually a valid hypothesis or not. So there'll be some more to come on that as we continue to research the capacity of that. Lastly, on page four, the college began tracking the number of credit hours dropped during the fall 2022 semester. Along with enrollment trends of continuing students, this is a leading indicator for retention of students at the college. This metric will actually continue to get more focus as we go throughout the term. It is important to understand that the retention metrics used in our key performance indicators, or KPIs as we like to call them, are actually a subset of both populations. They're a subset of continuing students, as well as a subset of these students that are dropping classes. Okay? I'm also going to point out to you on the dark blue boxes on pages three and four, is they contain very brief descriptions of some of the abbreviations and metrics. I know trustee Musial, you'll like that and appreciate that, the abbreviations being described for you in this report. While the board receives monthly updates on enrollment, I want to assure you that the college continually monitors our enrollment on a day-by-day basis. So we actually run this report every day and look at it every day. So, you know, we update you periodically, but understand there are people and staff members on this campus who are tracking this on an ongoing basis. With that, I'm going to pause for a moment on the enrollment component here and ask if there's any questions on this report.
Thank you, John. I'm going to jump in first and just say, I know I said this at collegial steering the other day. There's a method to the madness, and if some of you would just trust me, it'll make more sense in the long run. And at the risk of only having Senator Baumgartner watch this, I want to ask and grill you all on enrollment, so that when we go forth and I get sideswiped on a Tuesday by some random legislator about how we're not paying attention to enrollment, I can say, no, I know you're not watching our meetings. You know, like, we are. We're paying attention, and just to be able to say we're paying attention, in my mind, is part of what we're doing. So I know you're watching. I know there's lots of people and smart people paying attention. I just wanted to say that. These have been conversations Dr. Bound and I've had, and not all of you have been participating. But we know you are, and we're just, in my opinion, I'm doing my job, asking you and asking you and asking you. With that said, any other questions or comments for John? Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you for going slow, page by page, in some cases, column by column, because I think for those of us that are not your professional staff, we need a little help digesting this, and that really helps us understand the terminology as well as what areas we're looking at. One of the things I wanted to go to was on page two, this decrease of females, 25 to 59, we know is a national trend. I've been following a couple of things about that, and I meant to mention in the management report how infrequently we've gotten reports from the childcare center that we have here on campus, and how much I appreciated that. That was one of the nice benefits of being able to sit in all committees, is you really got a great 360 view of what they do there, which is incredible. I would argue, I think we can do more, and I think we need to, as a college, really, and it would come from the board, make a commitment that we can do more to expand opportunities for this specific population, which continues to decrease, and, you know, after post-COVID still is not rebounding in a way. I know that it's better than national trends, but that's never good enough for me. I want to do what's best for this community. And if we have women who cannot get back in the work for, or back into what their career goals or college goals are, I want to be part of that solution. We are so lucky and fortunate to have a center on site. I'm sure the amazing people we have on campus could investigate and look into what we can do to expand opportunities, because for any of us here who have children, we know that childcare, and there was just a report that came out statewide, Kansas is one of the, it has right now currently one of the lowest offerings of childcare opportunities nationwide, and it has decreased since COVID, whereas some states have really, really poured resources in to start expanding, and we have not. And it is a crisis. I was on a board for the governor, which I just resigned from, but it is at a crisis point, childcare. So I think there's something we can do for that. And then I just wanted to mention the same kind of thing for the African-American community. I'm glad that it's only 9%, but I also think we can figure out what would make them come back, what it is that would allow them to come back and be able to meet their goals, because we know that they're disproportionately affected economically. And I think that that's a real critical factor on our DEI committee. We can look at some of these. Thank you, thank you for the level of detail. I really, I really appreciate it. So personally, thank you.
I just wonder, as we talked about how we've seen growth in the Hispanic population by installing someone in place to focus on this, acknowledging that there are components to cultural components and different components that are different, is there anything that we, any pieces of that role we can replicate to women and black students? There has to be something that we can reapply.
Yeah.
Not everything, but something.
Good point.
I will just, did you have something? I will just say, thank you, John, and the college and whoever's responsible for it. I know I came a time or two for a COVID test, whatever clinic or organization we had here on campus. I know my wife and daughter sat in line for several hours one day. So in a host of different boards I'm on and activities and commitments I have, you know, I would assume it's a labor shortage that we have with respect to childcare is one thought I have.
Yes, yeah.
In terms of trying to come up with solutions, and we have smart people who work on this. But I do want to commend the college for all the different ways we have worked to reach out to various communities. I know we do that, and this is like the issue of our time. And I think it's critical that we bring efficacy to these groups, because frankly, if mothers of children buy in on education, then hopefully, you know, other populations, say white males, can come back up. Because for some reason, all of higher ed has just had a disconnect with people wanting to come here or anywhere and take on the debt or whatever. So I just wanted to thank the trustee, Smith Everett, for her comments, but then also just say, and recognize that we do do a number of different things, including voting. Haven't we had voting here?
For the last three cycles.
And I don't know if that answers your issue, but I commend you for raising the issue. I just, I kind of stopped listening to NPR because I'm tired of hearing problems. Like, I'm an activist, and I want to go for solutions. And I'm not saying you didn't present solutions. I'm just saying, you're absolutely right, but we need to all think about it.
I mean, I'm not offering any solutions. I'm just saying, can we do more? Let's find out. What would that cost? What would that look like?
I agree.
Who would that serve, and how would it benefit them? That's not for me to answer. That's the smart people in this room that can figure that out.
Any other questions for John?
All right, I've got more slides yet. I'm not done yet. Sorry. I told you I was going to be a lot more verbose. So just to reassure you that we do look at this every day, our current enrollment as of today, as of this morning, so this would be as of last night, was 4.1% on headcount being up, and 3.6% on credit hours, for those of you who are most interested in the financial component. All right, I'm now going to move on to a fall trend of our headcount. You know, there's recently been some requests for what does it look like fall over fall for our headcount in some of the prior board meetings. And so we prepared just a real brief five-year trend. And there's really two primary ways that higher education tracks enrollment, that we look at for enrollment trends. And the first one is actually a fall census enrollment. And the census is something that we take an official count as of the 20th day of the term. And what that really allows is for the natural start of that term enrollment fluctuation to settle out and settle down before that snapshot is taken. This chart here is showing the steady decline over the past five years, roughly about a 10% decline. However, due to the strategic enrollment efforts, as we've shared in the past, these declines have really been minimized in comparisons to that national trend, which is significantly more. I do want to point out the fall 2020 census count. I'm sure everybody has noticed that, that it's a drop down and then a back up. And this was actually artificially lower due to a significant delay in being able to register high school students and college now quickstep-plus courses, and majority of the traditional face-to-face courses being forced to an online format. So there is a decrease in the trend, partially due to the timing of some of the registrants that are normally in as of census count date. Due to the effort of both faculty and staff, the college is actually able to reduce the amount of credit hours dropped and increase in college now enrollment, thus Dr. Bound reported in the December board reported in the December board, meaning that our fall enrollment end of term was actually up by 0.3%, even though it appears to be down here at census point in time. By the end of term, we had actually increased that enrollment to only be down, or to be up by Pause real quick moment here on this one. Any quick questions here?
Can we stop calling it Quick Step Plus? Can we just call it College Algebra?
Sadly, no.
Aye.
Because it's a separate functional definition based on the way it's delivered, but we're working on aligning that delivery.
That seems esoteric.
Yes. And we're keeping the bursar's office, too.
No, that's another one.
All right. If there's no questions there, I'm going to move on to the unduplicated head count. This is actually the second way that higher education tracks enrollment. These enrollments are from all three terms, so a fall, spring, and summer are then combined, and then the duplicated students are removed from the counts. That way, if you attended here in a fall and a spring, you're counted as a one-time student, okay? So, it's, they're unduplicated across all three terms. And this actually provides us a unique number of students that was served during any given academic year. And much like the fall census chart, this chart shows a declining trend over the past five years, or 15% decline. Well, not a positive trend. Again, this has actually outperformed the national trends. And if you're interested in more detailed information on trend reporting, go out to the JCCC website, do a search for institutional research, and there is a whole list of annual reporting that we do that is public and available to the, to the community to look at. So, that, all that's out there. Any questions I can answer on this before I move on to the next segment of my report?
Maybe I'll ask you later offline, because I don't understand the math, that our unduplicated continues to go down, but our total enrollment has been, has rebounded in '21 and '22 and '23. Is that, I mean, we're up 3.9% from a year ago.
For a spring term, so if you go back and look at the chart there, this is actually looking at the academic year '21, '22. So, that would be fall of '21, spring of '22, summer of '22. I believe summer's of trailing.
Twenty-two, '22, '23.
So, that is not yet shown on there. We won't know that until the end of the 20...
But I was trying to figure out, does this mean we have more people, better retention semester to semester, so we have more duplicated students, so we're taking out more students, only counting as one, even though they're in two semesters?
No, this is actually due to the continuing decline.
Your answer's supposed to be yes.
I'm sorry, but I...
You're going to make me look smart, too, but, okay, I'll visit with you.
Yeah, visit with me later. I'll be more than glad to visit with you on that.
This is a new, we've heard this before, but I hadn't seen the trend.
Yep.
And you might explain, John, the two, the two reporting periods that actually make up a year after we're done, because most people just assume this happens once, it's census.
Yeah. We have multiple times when we capture this data and look at it, but nationally, the, what is, what is looked at as the fall census, because that's when most colleges have their, most of their enrollment. That's their largest single semester that they have, largest number of students. And then they look at a, how many students are you serving over any given academic year? So, unduplicated, you know, if you've, kind of the assumption there is looking at a workload issue, that it takes an effort to get a student in the door, and so, looking at that count helps look at that.
And correct if I'm wrong, don't we have a number of different institutions that are regularly monitoring our enrollment, the things that we're doing, HLC?
Yes, absolutely. So...
I mean, we constantly report.
Yes.
So, besides us bugging you, you have federal and state and many other private institutions watching.
He smiles at that.
Absolutely. I smile because my staff is the one that actually does the reporting to them. We have, I hate to quote exactly how many federal reports for compliance purposes that keeps us eligible for federal financial aid.
That pays to do, right?
That we are, if we don't do, it's a $26,000 fine per report. And then, we also submit, at one point in time when I was here, was over 500,000 records to KBORE annually on different pieces of information.
Who does that to KBORE?
And yet, they don't pay to...
Yeah.
Does KBORE have to report to anybody like that?
I, the legislator supposedly uses that data to inform their decisions on it.
Or should have to report somebody.
Yeah.
So...
Well, they, part of the reason we send them all of that information is that they sign off, when we do get our accreditation visit, one of the pieces of information that's required for our national accreditation and transfer is a letter of good standing from the Board of Regents. So, that cycle keeps us in good standing so that we can continue to maintain our standing for federal dollars.
I sure hope the legislature's watching KBORE.
Yeah. And as you look at those number fluctuations, to get a little bit more at the question that trustee Musial was asking, one of the things that we also have to keep in mind is the way in which we schedule parts of term. Census Day occurs at the beginning of every semester. That does not take into account any student who has enrolled but not yet attended for a late start course. So, we have to continually, so every time we start a 12-week course, an eight-week course, we have to recapture those numbers, because we have a number of students who do not attend standard 15-week classes.
That's part of the reason why our focus has shifted more recently to an end-of-term number, because that's really a better, for us, because of the number of parts of term that we have is, is really the best picture.
Any other questions on this point for John?
And I'm still not done. I still have some more slides.
I love you, man. Go.
Sorry. It is time for us to report on our key performance indicator update. And so, the first one, let me review what the college's key performance indicators are, as we like to call them, KPIs, actually are aligned with the 2021-2025 Strategic Plan and are a way used to measure the college's performance. These metrics are displayed on the college's website under the Strategic Plan Progress. So, if you search for Strategic Plan and look for Strategic Plan Progress, you can actually find these metrics. The KPIs are updated on two cycles, typically in October and July, and this really depends on when the data for the metrics become available. However, the benchmarks are updated as we receive them, as they become available from their respective entities. New data become available for four metrics in Fall '22, and we're recently updated on the website, and that's what I'm going to review today. The first one we're going to review is the full-time fall-to-fall retention rate. This is the percentage of first-time, full-time, degree-seeking certificates, seeking students from a fall term who graduate, no, excuse me, this is, that's the wrong definition. So, I copied and pasted the wrong definition. So, full-time fall-to-fall retention rate are those students who were enrolled in one fall and are now current, now enrolled in the following fall, or completed a degree or certificate in the following fall. This actually excludes high school students, so we do not include high school students in this because of the way their enrollment typically goes, okay? So, I'm looking at the chart, the Fall 2021 retention rate was 64%. And you're saying, yeah, but we've completed Fall '22. Why are we not looking at Fall '22? This is a cohort-based number, okay? So, these are students that were enrolled as of Fall of '21. Were they enrolled during the Fall '22 term? Okay, so it's a cohort-based model. So, the 64% was actually a decline of one percentage point. We were actually at 65% last year. These students, okay, the target for the metric is actually set at 66%, and we get our benchmark data from IPEDS. So, this is the federal, one of those federal reports that was being referenced earlier. I'm going to move on. Next is the part-time fall-to-fall retention rate. This is the same definition as the previous one, except it's focusing on part-time students only. And this chart here shows a significant increase over the past two cycles. In Fall of 2019, part-time enrollment, as expected, there were significant decreases in the students who enrolled in Fall '22. Can anybody guess why? What started in 2020? Yeah, the COVID-19 pandemic. So, these enrollments have returned to the normal performance of the college for Fall 2020 cohort, and for Fall '21 cohort has actually matched the most recent high performance, okay? And you're saying, but we were still in COVID in Fall 2020. Remember, it's a smaller population, even, and so, those students were more likely to return for that Fall '21 term, okay? Yes?
Do you know when we're going to get the peer data to...
I wish I knew.
Okay.
IPEDS actually runs about two years behind. So, we submit the data, they do a bunch of checks on it. We have the opportunity to actually go in and change data, update data if we happen to missubmit. So, it runs a good two years behind usually.
We might get 2020 and next year, basically?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we're expecting probably by the end of the spring term that we'll probably have something for the Fall '20 cohort, and so, we'll be reporting that over the summer to the board.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I take a stab at my understanding? We're doing a better job retaining our part-time students than our full-time fall-to-fall. Is that the way you read that?
Yes, that's, well, relatively speaking. So, if you look at the percentage of the fall-to-fall for full-time, it's actually about 64%.
Okay.
But when you look at the percentage for the part-time, it's in the 43%, 48%, excuse me. That makes sense?
Yes.
So, it's actually lower, just the way the chart looks like. Yeah, it's the graph.
But we are significantly below, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yep.
We are significantly below our peers, at least of, you know, 18 and 19, in terms of retaining our full-time fall-to-fall. Like, that's an area where we could find out what our peers are doing and improve on that.
Yes.
And then we'll see when the data comes in, if they were able to maintain that as well, or if they're...
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And that's one of the things we're going to be really looking at in that full-time. There is a longer lag there in that, for some reason, on that full-time data. One of the challenges we have is because of where we're situated, some of the data that we compare to is actually coming from schools that have different characteristics than us and things like that. And so, sometimes there, like, some of your rural schools may do better in this because they have a more captive audience than what we do. And so, there's some challenges there with that. There's different dynamics in the urban and suburban schools than what we have the ability to compare against on some of the data.
And it also does not capture early transfer. So, if a student was doing particularly well and decided after their first year they were ready to move on, that is, that's a loss of a student.
Correct.
We don't know that.
We can't, there's no capturing that as a positive to show that they are still engaged in higher education, and we helped them get to the university level. That is not shown here. It looks like a loss for us, even if we actually enabled them to go along.
Yeah. Yep. Now, we will capture that in our next metric.
Yeah.
And I guess throughout this, and I'm looking at this, and I'm on the website now for Strategic Plan, easy for you to say, progress. What does peers mean then?
So...
I know it's hard to find a clone, but we, I assume our suburban community college, that are full, all three legs of the thing, that we're kind of comparing to them when we say peers?
As close as we can, yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, we are, and you're exactly right, we are significantly below those who we've identified as as closest peers. We're actually in the process right now of reviewing who those peers are, because it's been about 10 years since we've actually updated that list. And so, as we know, a lot has changed over the past 10 years, and so, we will, we're working on that right now.
Because I understand the national data...
Yeah.
Doesn't tell us very much. It'd be as if we compared ourselves to the other 18 community colleges in Kansas, which aren't like us.
Right.
Yes.
Trying to find the best peers we have is difficult and ongoing.
Correct. Absolutely.
Thank you.
We're going to move into the full-time success rate then. So, this chart is actually displaying here the full-time, first-time, degree-seeking or certificate-seeking students and their cohort success rate. It is calculated as the number of students who successfully completed a degree or certificate, or they transferred to another institution within 150% of the time. Okay, so, let's talk about 150%. That is looking at a degree typically takes four terms. So, 150% of the time means within six terms, they would have transferred or graduated to an institution, okay? Gives them a little bit more time than just a straight, you went straight through and did it. Okay? And then that is divided by the number of students who were initially enrolled as a full-time, first-time, degree-seeking, certificate student at JCCC. Okay, so, we're getting a ratio here, and this, again, is excluding high school students. So, this chart is showing a five-point decrease in the success rate of full-time, degree-seeking students from Fall of 2017 to 48% to Fall of 2019 to 43%. The Fall 2018 cohort of students would have had through the Spring of '21 to complete. Remember what hit in Spring of 2020? Yeah, that COVID pandemic, again. Okay, the target here for this metric is actually 45%. We're going to likely see the impact of the pandemic for an additional two to three years on some of these metrics that we're tracking, okay? So, I'm sick and tired of talking about it, but it's a reality in our world, because we have so many lagging indicators that we use, okay? But we're hopeful that the Strategic Plan strategies for Goal One, that's focused on student success, this is our guided pathways, our wraparound services, our mandatory orientation, will actually help mitigate those, that long-term effect of COVID. Next chart, as you can imagine, is actually looking at part-time, first-time, degree-seeking or certificate-seeking cohort success rate. Similar definition, except these are looking at part-time students who started here at JCCC, and they actually get additional time to complete. So, a part-time student actually gets 12 terms instead of four terms to complete, okay? Or six, as you're comparing to a full-time student, okay? Interestingly, part-time success rate didn't experience a significant decrease due to the pandemic. A 1%, a 1 percentage point decrease. Went from a 26 to 25. The target for this metric was actually set at 25%. It is most difficult to affect, to the effect, given the long period of students these are allowed to have, to be counted as success. We're not really for sure why, but my guess is it's because they were actually given 12 terms to be counted. So, we're looking at students who were clear back in Fall of 2016, starting here, is the most recent data, okay? Stop here for just a second on success and see if there's any questions.
Can you just reiterate, success is transferred or...?
Completed. Yep. So, they transferred to another institution, or they completed here with a degree or certificate. And it could be both, but they're only counted one time in the, in the success number.
And I'm sorry to ask you, Ian, but why exactly isn't this data available? Why is there such a lag?
Because of, it's a cohort-based model, and so, we have to look at the point in time that they came in, and then compare to give them time to complete that degree or certificate, or transfer on. And so, the feds use 150% of the degree time as the standard for that. Does that help?
Are you asking about the peers?
All of it.
The lag in peers is because...
This is a complex, these are complex metrics.
Yeah, I mean, my head's spinning, and I'm just trying to understand. I don't recall such a lag in any statistics ever presented before, and I'm not...
Welcome to education.
Saying anything uncorporate. I'm just, you know, it's frustrating for us. We're supposed to...
Absolutely.
It's gotta be frustrating for you. I'm not saying you're doing anything wrong. I'm just saying, it's frustrating.
That one.
It pushes you three years out from the date at which they, any person first matriculated, which is a long time to wait, quite frankly.
Yep. That's the reason why we monitor course success rates. We monitor fall-to-spring retention rates. We monitor fall-to-fall retention rates. So, we're trying to take measures throughout the cycle of that student's life cycle here, so that we can try to judge, are we getting better or not in mid-process? This is kind of an end-of-process measure for us. And I'm going to go just a little further on that end-of-process measure with my next one.
Good.
So, this is the last KPI that I have, and this was employed career and technical completers. So, we're looking at a very small segment. We're not looking at our transfer students. We're looking at just those students who were actually career or technical students. This data is pulled from responses from the JCCC Career Student Follow-Up Survey. It's defined as the percent of career and technical education graduates who were employed. So, we actually are right now in the midst of looking at our most recent academic cycle and calling these students on the phone. and calling these students on the phone to say, would you be willing to answer a survey for us? And we have them fill out a series of questions. And one of the questions we ask, are you employed? Okay? So this chart shows an upward trend in the recent CTE completers who are employed. That's great. With a target of 89%, the college reached it in actually fall of '21. That is what our measure says. This is not surprising to me, given the recent strong employment market. However, as was talked about earlier in this meeting, you know, there is a prediction of a recession on the forefront and a potential slowing in the employment market. And so I think it's going to be a little challenging for us to maintain that level as we go forward, as that employment market may deteriorate over the next year or two years. So not saying we aren't working towards it, not saying we're not trying to get better and maintain it, but it could be challenging for us.
My question on this one is, is it employed in their field of study? Do we ask that, or are we just asking if they're employed? And do we ask if it's part-time or full-time?
We don't ask full-time, part-time. We do ask if it's employed in their field of study. It is lower because more of them are employed outside. The challenge that we have with this is the aspect that some of them may be employed in a field, in their field of study, but not actually in an area that is their field of study. So I may be a computer programmer, but I'm working for McDonald's as a computer programmer, but it would, they might perceive that to be that I'm not in my field of study. So there's a challenge there with some of those definitions that we have to work with. So I can't remember off the top of my head what that percentage is. It is a little lower, but we, yes, we do collect that data.
So this is reflective, not of their field of study, just in general?
Just in general, employed, correct.
And it's all employment of any kind?
Employment of any kind, that they have been employed in any kind.
Okay.
I understand where you're saying there's a lag in results when we're comparing against peers nationally. Is there a reason why we don't have 2022, spring of 2022 data included on here?
We do this annually, and 2022 just finished up. And so we have to wait about six months after they have graduated. So we're looking at fall '21, spring '22, I think summer '22, I think it's the lagging. And so we have to wait six months after they've all graduated before we can actually start following up, give them time to find a job in their career. And so that's the reason why '21 is the most recent. We're right in the middle right now of collecting that '22 data. The staff spent significant time of their holiday break in the office, actually making phone calls to these students, because that was, that's a good time to catch them, is on holidays and weekends. And so they come in, the IR staff come in over those times and make those phone calls to try to reach these students.
Thank you to the staff for doing that.
Yeah, exactly.
With that, I have ended my speaking, so...
Any questions for Mr. Clayton, any other questions?
Good data. Thank you for going in depth.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, John.
All right, the next item on our agenda. Are you still going?
Yeah.
Now, this is, that actually ends the president's report.
Thank you, Dr. McLeod. And thank you to all the administration staff tonight who presented. The next item on our agenda is new business. Is there any new business for the good of the order? I don't believe we have any. Welcome to Trustee Rail.
Thank you.
Old business, I believe we have a presentation here by Lisa Waldman regarding the land purchase agreement.
Hello again, third time's a charm. This is exciting. We have been keeping you all up to date about the opportunity we have to purchase land to expand our commercial driving license training program. And so we are at the point where we, can I move this, Jason? Yeah. We have the opportunity to expand it and are coming to you this evening with the recommendation to approve a contract to purchase 10 acres of land. And I'd like to give you a very brief overview about the project. And Trustee Rail, I would encourage you to ask questions, since you have not been part of these previous conversations that we've had with the board, so please don't hesitate as...
Thank you, I appreciate that. I've tried to get up to speed on what you're doing, so hopefully you'll answer all the rest of my questions.
Okay, thank you. Well, I would welcome any other ones. So we have needed to expand the program for several years and looked at many different options. Recently, the state of Kansas dedicated some pandemic relief funds, state fiscal recovery funds, to workforce development and made available to us $2.5 million approximately as a one-to-one match. So if we were able to match those funds, that amount, or any amount up to that amount of $2.538,502, the state would match it, and we can dedicate that to expanding the program. We were able to successfully raise $2 million. The foundation was able to secure that through a private donation. And the remaining balance of $538,502 is coming from our CDL, our Commercial Driver License Reserve Funds. And those are funds that are only able to be spent on the CDL program. They are a little bit different than our general fund, and so this is a perfect use for those. So we have the opportunity of a $5 million investment in the CDL program. The anticipated outcome of this investment is the opportunity to expand the program. We currently serve about 334 CDL students annually, and this will allow us to serve approximately 515, so a significant increase. In addition, we will be able to expand the capacity for contract training that we offer to businesses. Many of our CDL students are employees of existing businesses that need truck drivers, and those are on a contract basis. So we offer both open enrollment classes, public classes, for individuals interested in training and becoming a truck driver, and then we offer contract training to businesses who need to train their own employees. This is an opportunity to train students for high-demand, high-wage jobs. If you have been reading the news over the past couple of years, you're aware that there is a severe shortage of truck drivers, and the wages in that industry are increasing and very sustainable jobs. So we're very proud to be able to offer that training and help transform people's lives by getting those jobs. It will also significantly enhance the college's presence in Edgerton near the Intermodal. That is where the land is that we're looking at. Currently, just by way of background, we lease space at three different locations, and the Intermodal is one of them, right, in Edgerton, is one of our main training centers. And the CDL examiner's office is also in that same location at Kansas City Logistics Park. So this land that we are hoping to purchase is 10.05 acres, right across the street essentially from the CDL examiner's office, within a five-minute drive. We project it to be a design build, and that means that we will hire a criterion architect to define the scope of the project, and then a different company and architects and contractors will build out the project for us. The seller is Colmia LLC. This is an individual who owns that land, and we have negotiated a purchase price of $2.273 per square foot, which is an estimated total purchase price of $995,000. That is subject to due diligence and a final survey. All of the normal processes that would be involved in purchasing land will be addressed legally. Kelsey and her team have been incredibly helpful in negotiating this contract, reviewing it, and making sure that we have in it what we need for this to be successful. So this evening, what I'm asking, what we are coming to you with, is the recommendation to authorize the real estate purchase agreement. Once that is done, we will engage in the due diligence. We have approximately 90 days to complete that, and that's that time period where you do lots of appraisals, surveying, environmentals on the land to make sure that it is indeed what it is represented to be to us. We'll keep you updated prior to the land closing. The closure, though, will happen. Your approval this evening will be the approval to close, assuming that everything checks out, as we hope it will. But we will certainly keep you apprised of any concerns we have, anything that might come up along the way prior to the land closing, and then, of course, update you throughout, through the committee process and the board meeting process if needed throughout the development of the project. So I would be delighted to answer what other questions I can.
Thank you very much. What questions do we have for Lisa? Trustee Rail?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't really have any questions. I was really excited to hear about this project, and it was one of the things that I've spent a little bit of time trying to get my arms around prior to the meeting tonight. You know, this is exactly the kind of thing that brings together the needs of people looking for jobs and the needs of people looking for workers. And the opportunity to really increase the number of students we're allowed to get out of that program is really wonderful. It's a win-win situation for us, for the business community, and for people looking for jobs. So job well done for everybody. This has been in process for a long, long time, so thank you for that.
Thank you. It has, and some amazing opportunities for students. You had mentioned that you're a veteran. We have a Veterans Grant and are able to help 15, 12 to 15 veterans through the program every year, use some of those COVID funds when we have access to them to support the program. Lots and lots of opportunities, so thank you.
Does this mean that all of my supply chain issues will be solved? And I won't have to...
Well... Well, I can't go quite that far.
Thank you, I'm page two.
We don't have a red phone. If I may, Lisa, because I enjoy being a contrarian, The New York Times had an article in October of last year about the long road to driverless trucks, right? And that there are 18-wheel trucks now on the highways in California and Texas, but there are still human safety drivers behind the wheels. And then in many instances, the private companies that are pushing these still have to have the drivers there to take the wheel for safety purposes. I mean, do we anticipate that driverless trucks will be a thing anytime soon? And if so, what do we do with this land after that advent?
So I do not anticipate it anytime soon. Certainly, the technology is being researched, that is for sure. I think we have a long way to go on that. And our return on investment in this project, I think, will certainly outpace the coming of driverless trucks. But regardless, it's a good question, and the land itself has value, and it is a burgeoning area of town.
And that would provide us a margin of safety of some level, right? Like, if and when in the next, and I mean it, in the next 20, 30 years, this becomes a thing, we'll always have that land.
Absolutely.
As a margin of safety in case this investment doesn't quite bear out. And, you know, I understand, I fully support this. I think you know that, and my favorite moment is the time I suggested raising the mill and watching Trustee Hamel's eyeballs get real big, you know? So I wanted to make this happen, and I've got some other stuff to say, but, you know, I wanted to just plant that seed in the administration's head, that there's a day coming when driverless trucks will be here. And my wife works for Lockton and in and around the insurance industry, and we have many friends that they want this, and they want this bad. They think they're going to save time and money on labor, and I respectfully disagree with them. I'm a proponent of human labor, and I think it was a key, a theme in the new Top Gun movie, drones versus pilots, that I think, you know, was real. So I'm just saying, I wanted to ask that question and ask the difficult question in, not in loyal opposition, but just as a critical way to say, because I've gotten some criticism for being too on board on this project. And I have pushed back and said to my detractors that I disagree with you. I think anybody in this process would know I've been critical of it, and we're a long way off, is what I'm getting, right?
I believe we are a long way off. I also think that should that day come, there will be other innovations down the road that we can use that land for, as an opportunity to train our students in whatever that technology or opportunity may be.
And not for nothing, and this, you know, I'm not wasting time. I've got a dear friend, he and I go back and forth about whether or not airplanes land themselves, and you should Google what I'm saying. So they believe that airlines, major airlines, use automatic pilot for landing, takeoff and landing. And you understand, I'm in an industry of civil litigation and plaintiff's trial law, and I've had many, many auto cases. And arguing with this one friend all night at a dinner party, I'm like, at 20, 30 years, I think I'm being generous. I don't know when and if this is ever going to come because it's a dangerous concept. And he goes, well, we could do it if it wasn't for all the drivers on the road. I go, that's how I know. That's how I know. You're not going to be able to remove the human element, which arrives me to perhaps my point. I'm glad for this project. I thank you for your work, Joy Ginsburg, Kate Allen, Dr. Bound's quick movement on this and support of you all to do it. I think it was remarkable for the funding that we came up with, and I just want to commend you and everybody involved. And I want to be able to say to certain people, I asked the question.
Yes, I appreciate that. Included in your list, the team is extensive on this, as you can imagine with any big project. So I had mentioned Kelsey and her team. Procurement has been incredibly helpful. The grants office, Melinda and Anthony and their team has been, they've negotiated this with the state, and just so many folks, Rachel Liers' group.
So I want to thank you for the concept of the land, because I froze trying to think of what possible investment benefits we could have, like, what will we do with this land? And it's like, well, we have land.
Yeah, and the other thing to remember is this is essentially a $500,000 investment of the college, and obviously the strong support of the private donation and for a $5 million project. So it's a nice opportunity.
All right, thank you very much. Any other question?
Yes, Lee, thank you. Since you brought my name up, I'll kind of go through some of the things we were talking about. Yeah, you're good. So not only are we spending $500,000 of our money, obviously, we're spending $5,200 from a grant, and we want to make sure we're being responsible with that money, whether it's taxpayer money, or whether it's, you know, grant money, or college money. And so, again, we're spending $5 million. Not only are we having assets, and that we're also going to be helping the community serve a purpose through finding drivers that we obviously need, helping people in line that have been trying to get into the program for a while on the waiting list. But the return on investment, I don't remember the figures now, but we went through and looked at some of the figures on return on investment, and I don't remember them exactly, but I remember it being faster than I even expected it to be, so. We're really hitting all the boxes on this, so it's been great for everything. We're making good use of those funds.
Thank you, Trustee. Are you done?
Yes, thank you.
No, no, you're fine. I talked to you. Trustee Muse.
Folks, this is the closest to a no-brainer that we've had since I've been on the board in 11 years. 200 more people getting their commercial driver's license a year with money dedicated from the legislature that we couldn't spend on anything else, $500,000 from CDL fund we couldn't spend on anything else, and $2 million in a grant that was dedicated to this. So I think we've, I think we've killed this horse again. This is a good project, and I'm glad we did it.
With that, Mr. Chair, do we make a motion, or how do we...
I have a resolution. I'm going to have to read.
A recommendation, I believe, to read.
Read the whole thing?
So you don't have to read the resolution. At the end, there's a recommendation that you could read aloud.
It is, fellow board members, the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation to adopt the resolution approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of the real estate purchase agreement with Colmia LLC for the purchase of approximately 10.05 acres of land generally described as part of Johnson County, Kansas, parcel number 2F221435-2009, and hashtag 2F221435-2002, located on West 191st Street, Edgerton, Kansas, at a negotiated purchase price of $2.27... Excuse me, let me just write that. $2.273 per square foot, and an estimated total purchase price of $900,095, purchase price of $995,000, subject to the terms and conditions of the agreement, including due diligence and a final survey of the land to determine the exact square foot upon which the purchase price will be based. Now, I botched that, but I so...
I'll second.
Any further discussion on this recommendation of the college administration that we move forward with the CDL project? Seeing and hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
And those opposed? Motion and resolution passes unanimously. Thank you very much to everyone on that.
Thank you all very much.
That no-brainer.
I wrote it. No-brainer.
Uh, thank you.
You wrote no-brain.
8382 does not mean no-brain. Consent agenda is the next item on our agenda. Uh, we have regularly monthly reports and recommendations in your board packet. Is there any item any trustee would like to take off of the consent agenda?
If someone wanted to make a comment about something, could we do that now, or do you want to wait until discussion?
Uh, we've done this different ways,